It is now 5:00 PM, April 16, 2019. And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City's Housing Assets Successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez?
Present.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
I don't see anyone in the audience that would like to address the council, therefore, can we have declaration of closed session items by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have three items this evening to involve real property negotiations. Item A is real property negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8. The property location and the negotiating parties set forth on the agenda, and that's on behalf of the city council. Item B is public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code 54957b, in the position as city manager. And item C is property negotiations, again pursuant to government code 54956.8, and again the property address and information and the negotiating parties that set forth on the agenda, and that is on behalf of the airport authority. To the extent there's reportable action on any of those items, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the six o'clock regular meeting.
Thank you. So at this time, we will recess to closed session in a regular session convened at 6:00 PM. It is now 5:04, April 16, 2019. And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City's Housing Assets Accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez?
Present.
Councilmember Jones? Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here. May we have closed session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had three closed session items this evening. Item A was real property negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8. The property, the parties negotiating on the property is addressed on the agenda. Item B was public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code 54957b, position is city manager's position. And item C was also real property negotiations, this time on behalf of the airport authority, pursuant to government code 54956.8, and again, the property location and the negotiating parties are set forth on the agenda. At this point, there is reportable action with respect to item A, the real property negotiations with Narotree LLC. The city council, on a four-one vote with councilmember Gomez voting no, agreed to allow for the sale of property as a small parcel of 3,816 square feet for a sales price of $3,696 or a dollar a square foot, and that is with respect to APN number 309312108. That is the only reportable action at this time. We have not concluded the discussion on item B, and we will be going back into closed session to discuss item B at the conclusion of the regular session.
Thank you. This evening, we have the invocation that will be delivered by Chandell Sutton with Life Church, and are in pledge allegiance to be led by Police Chief Rick Passanger, so please stand.
Good evening. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of this community, Lord. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that might affect the citizens of this great city. Continue to remind us that all that we do here today is for the benefit of this city and for the service of humanity. We ask all these things in your Son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
This evening, I have two presentations, two proclamations that I will be presenting, so I will come down and do the presentations. The first presentation that I have is for Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I would like for Lulu Villarreal, if she can please come and join me. Of course, I would say it right, Villarreal. How are you? Wonderful. Lulu, I'm proud to join the Victorville City Council in proclaiming April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Victorville, and we encourage all citizens to help prevent child abuse and to provide for the physical, emotional, and developmental needs of our children. Thank you to the Children's Network for your efforts to protect our children. Together, we build a strong Victorville. I'm pleased to present you with this proclamation from the City Council. I present this to you on behalf of the Victorville City Council. And now the second one is National Day of Prayer, and Pastor Charles Spelman, if you will join me. Associate Pastor Charles Spelman from the Gay Church of High Desert, May 2 has been designated the National Day of Prayer in the United States. This year's theme is "Love One Another." Beautiful words. As prayer is an important part of many religions practiced throughout the country and our local community, I am proud to proclaim May 2 is the 2019 National Day of Prayer in the City of Victorville. Pastor Spelman, I'm pleased to present you with this proclamation from the City Council. On behalf of the Victorville City Council, I present this proclamation to you. Now, at this time, may we have our city clerk present the agenda to council and any revisions to the agenda?
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment or on a particular item will be required to fill out a white speaker card located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. All communications are to be addressed directly to the city council, not to the members of the audience. In accordance with state law, the city council may not discuss or take action on any non-agenda items. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a city council meeting by interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the presiding officer. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution. Those are all the documents I have. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, if there is an item on this agenda that may be a conflict of interest to any council member, please identify that at this time.
Madam Mayor, I have conflict of interest on item B1.
Very well.
Would you state the reason?
Because my house is on the golf course.
Thank you. That's all we need.
Thank you. Yes, it's the next item. Thank you, Mr. Cox. This evening, we did not have any appeal hearings. That's why we're moving right on to public hearings, and I will start with item B1. A public hearing to hear arguments for and against the appropriation of additional fund, well, it reads additional funding necessary for golf course operations. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approve resolution number 19-018 for an additional appropriation of revenue in the amount of $6,600,000.
Thank you. At this time, are there any questions of staff by council members? I will start with Ms. Jones.
Yes, just very briefly. I'm wondering if city manager Metzler can help us with the subject line on this. It says appropriation of additional funding necessary for golf course operations, and yet that is in fact not what we're doing here.
Yes, the subject matter is somewhat misleading. In fact, the item more so specifically is dealing with the correcting of an entry. So the item here particularly is dealing with a non-cash item, not actually appropriating funds to the operating budget of the golf course. Instead, it's actually cleaning up a amount owing between the golf, I'm sorry, the general fund and the golf fund. So these are just correcting entries akin to journal entries, non-cash transactions, and not changing or altering the actual budget to the operations of the golf course.
And then this is actually effectively what we took up a couple meetings ago, and we've just brought it back on this meeting because we were shy of votes needed to take any kind of action.
That's correct.
My understanding on this, because I had the same question, was, was this actually the budget for the golf course? The answer was no. This was a question of double listing or saying transferring one item to another. And so I will say that I move that we accept the resolution number 19-018 for the additional appropriation of revenue in the amount of $6,600,000.
Ms. Gomez, did you have anything?
Very interesting how we sugarcoat what we're reading orally versus what's in contracts. So I'm going to read the attachment wording, so you decide for yourself what is it that we're doing. This is a resolution 19-018. It's a resolution to the City, the City Council of the City of Victorville authorizing additional appropriations to support the Green Tree Golf Course operations for fiscal year 2018-2019 in writing. I don't need anybody to interpret what I just read. If you need anybody to interpret that, you might as well go to the city manager, but I'm reading what I'm stating right here. So additional funding necessary for the golf course operations, resolution 19-018. What mid-year additional estimates of expenditures and resolutions for the golf course did the city bring to the council, and why aren't they in the report for the analysis? Every one of you should have gotten this documentation. If you don't have it, hroch@victorville.ca.gov. She will give you that information when you ask to be a part of the notification when we get our Agenda 72 to 24 hours in advance. What did the city council fix on March 19, 2019? Was it that error, which is the journal entry that was suggested by the auditor? Was it the transfer in the inter loan?
You have 30 seconds.
To the sewer loan fund 425? Why isn't resolution 19-010 in this reporting? Please email it to me and have it as a hard copy in my inbox. I'll be voting no on this item. $6.6 million for a golf course, which this gentleman lives on and a lot of your planning commissioners do. Think next time is to say three minute whatever you need to say. That's your taxpayer dollars at play.
May I ask, Madam Clerk, do I have any additional time left?
Yes.
I do. All right. So just to be very clear, this is not a transfer of cash. There's no cash involved in this. This is a correcting journal entry to reverse and reenter so that the postings occur in the proper accounts. In writing, if you look at the agenda in the block that says finance use only, it says additional appropriation, no. Additional revenue, yes, $6.6 million. And that's the money coming in, that's the debit monies that come into the loans payable on the golf fund, correct? So there's no cash being transactioned, transacted. It's merely the documentation that supports what rightly occurred.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. That...
And I'm still waiting for my responses, because this was staff questions, so if you guys captured that, please respond to my questions. I appreciate that.
And if I might, I think to best capture a response to councilmember Gomez's comments, I just have to say that the subject line could have been drafted better, and...
I'm sorry, Mr. Metzler, that wasn't my question. I don't know if you would like me to repeat them, but you don't need to alter what you've said. I just wanted the questions responded, and if not, you can just say that you're not going to be answering them, and I appreciate that honesty.
Madam Mayor, I was, I'm tempting to answer. I wasn't complete with my answer yet, so I'll take direction on how you want me to proceed.
Is your time up?
Yes.
Yeah, your time is up. At this time, let me see. I do have one card. Ramiro Rodriguez?
Good afternoon. I've been coming here for the last few years, asking questions about the golf course, making comments, suggestions. On this agenda item, for this time, reading the additional information. It seems that they're just moving money around from fund to fund, sanitary funds, sanitation fund, now it's going to the general fund. It's a little Ponzi little thing going on here that doesn't really appear too well. Also, just moving money around to fund this. Now it's a general fund, now it's openly, we have to pay for it. It seems that it's something that it should be actually privatized or done away with, but to actually have us pick up the slack for decisions that the council has done in the past, there's a lot of hidden agendas behind all this. One of the suggestions we've, I've made and other people have had, start an association, dues and fees for these houses. There's almost 700 houses there. $10 a week, it would pay the $55,000 a month and leave the taxpayers from paying that fund. And a lot of those houses are dilapidated. They're not state-of-the-art mansions, Bob Hope-style houses. They're rental properties that people have, there are hoarders there also. It's not really the best, the best view everyone can get. The renters, the owners can, I think they can afford those $10 a week, would be $40 a month. And then maybe they would start an association, they would take care of the funds, and I'd see those guys would bring those 600. Before it was, it was the mark of the beast, $666,000. Now it's $6.6 million. That's what's really throwing me off. Why? Now we're not going to vote for it every six months or every year, now it's going to go for 10 years? So that way, everybody can go back happily and not have to be voted in and get new people in there so they can vote for this monster of a deal. This is a blockbuster video store that we have right there in the middle of town. That's how I see it. But we're just venting. You guys decide already what you guys are going to do. So we're just here to vent, to say, and to complain, and to make noise.
You have 30 seconds.
And then have something published in the newspaper the next day? Your minds are already made up. When you guys were elected, what you said one thing and what you did the other thing, that's understandable. But like I said, it's $55,000 a month. Now it's $6 million. Now that's a little bit more. But thank you for the blockbuster video we have here. Thank you.
That was the only card that I had.
Madam Mayor, I did receive, or council did receive, a letter from Alejandro Diaz that will be included into the record as well.
Thank you. And I failed to mention that I had opened the public hearing, or did I open it? I think I did.
You opened it.
Yeah, okay. So at this time, I close the public hearing, and I request a motion in a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the city council take action in accordance with the recommendation posted on the agenda.
Is there a second?
I believe...
It was before the public hearing.
Ms. Ramirez had already made the motion?
Oh, okay.
You made the motion?
Yeah, so I needed a second.
Okay, it was, well, it was before the public hearing, so I'll second it then.
Okay. Motion made by Mayor Protem Ramirez, seconded by councilmember Jones. Any further comments?
Yes, there's going to be further comments. So this is a very nice game that the city council plays, but it's your taxpayer dollars. You look around you, how many percentage do we have that actual taxpayers that are interested in fighting for a cause? How many of these people are staff members? If you look around, maybe we need to start paying a little bit more attention at our viewership, which has skyrocketed since 2016. Well, we have people that don't pay attention because they're hardworking, and they need somewhere to go eat, and somewhere to go play, and somewhere to be entertained. We have $6.6 million. The golf course costs 1.2 million, and out of that money that we spend every year, 666,000 of it goes down the tube because we can't break even, decade after decade. But we complain about police services because we don't have enough police officers. We complain about our streets that need more public service. We complain about social programs, and we complain of all these things, but when it comes to the time to put pressure of $6.6 million, that's your dollar for every penny that you make, 7.25% of that user taxi that you go buy food and clothing, this is where it's being re-appropriated. So come and think again, because this is what we need. One person at the dais is not enough. We need the people coming up and lining up, and it's very unfortunate that we have not entrusted enough for you to come and not be intimidated by us. This is not a court system. We can work together. This is one person who lives at that golf course. The secondary person who is living here was supplanted by Mrs. Jones. We keep getting the same kind of mentality with our taxpayer dollars. When will there be a change? $6.6 million, what would you do with it? With $6.6 million for you and your family alone? We're doing this for about 74 square miles, 130,000 people, over 50% of them Hispanic, over 30% of them seniors, over the median age being 29.1 of age. We need to start thinking about everybody, not just our golf course. The house is 680 houses, and that's not the close by houses, a lot of them are renting houses or rental properties.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Ramirez, seconded by councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with councilmember Cox absent, and councilmember Gomez voting no.
And now we move on to consent calendar. Consent calendar items C1 through C6 can be approved with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for further discussion. I make a motion that we approve items C1 through C6.
I'm going to be commenting on items in question C2 through C6.
All right. That being the case, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion so that we separate the two things out and remove the items for discussion from the consent agenda. May I?
Yes.
Okay, so I move that the council take action to approve item C1 in accordance with the recommendation on the agenda. And that we pull items C2 through C6 for separate consideration.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia, to pass. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
For item C2, notice of completion for block wall repair at various LMAD locations. The questions are what information did the city attain in terms of collecting the money? The questions are, what information did the city attain in terms of collecting the money? Has the city attorney or risk management or any other departments of the city been involved in this pursuits of collecting these monies from the property owners, or if there were commercial sites? If so, what processes and procedures were followed by each group, entity, or individual? And why aren't the costs and the fees associated with each block wall repair as part of the agenda? There was about $30,000 which was spent, but I'm not going to assume that it was equally on each one of these. And if there was police involvement, what was the police's involvement? What other city departments or contracted city sources were involved? For item C3, review and file the building division activity report. According to my personal observations, no expertise whatsoever. Because not only, I'm looking at the building department, and I'm, I'm making my own assumptions. So I noted that in the months of January, February, and March, 21st, 37, and 42, construction permits were issued. In January, and February, March, 17, 35, and 38 were constructed. And this was a total of 91 construction permits, valuing at approximately $27 million. And I'm assuming that it's all revenue. So if you look at these charts, that's all they are, charts, there's no narrative. So I'm trying to guess estimate what I'm looking at. Why doesn't the building division activity report attach narratives to the diagrams that are attached as references? And in this case, what does the miscellaneous refer to? To which fund account does this $27 million get placed? And then, there's $10,000, the highest paid employee to the city of Victorville. How does this type of approval and attached data for the future pay is being incorporated? So in other words, I'm not understanding how we're approving for a certain March 9th to the 22nd, but yet the 29th is already being approved, how does that affect our interest in the city?
Mr. City Attorney, can I suggest Ms. Gomez's questions be answered at a later time?
Certainly, if that's your suggestion, certainly I can work with staff to get answers to those questions.
They're quite complex, so I'd rather have them respond to her later. Thank you. Can I move on?
We need a motion on the ones that we pulled. So may I go ahead and venture that? Thank you, so Madam Mayor, I move that the council take action on items C2 through C6 in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yeah, as, as a point of order, in the last two and a half years, there has never been a time in the consent calendar, so just recently. And I've asked the city attorney, because I don't see anything on the policy. There hasn't been. And lately, there ha, there's these things happening and maneuvering as I adjust my timing. And I want to make sure that's on the record. Because we're supposed to be following policy, but we create the policy to even usurp our timing. And so that's why I wanted to sit up on the record. But I don't, I don't need your response, Mr. City. You know why? Because I asked you privately, and you said you weren't sure. But Charlene whispered into your ear, and now you have a response, and she's not the city attorney.
Mayor Garcia, may I respond?
Uh, yes, please.
There is a policy in the policy manual regarding limitations on consent calendar.
So there's a motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to written communications. Item D1, annexation of track 14499 to Victorville Citywide 2, landscape maintenance assessment district number 6. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council adopt resolution number 19-014, primarily approving the engineer's report for annexation of track number 14499 to Citywide 2 Landscape Maintenance Assessment District number 6, and adopt resolution number 19-015 to declare its intention to annex track 14499 into LMAD 6, levy assessments on the parcel and track number 14499, and detach said tract from Citywide Landscape Maintenance Assessment District number 1, set a public hearing for June 18th, 2019, and order public hearing notices and assessment ballots be mailed to property owners in track number 14499.
Thank you. At this time, do we have any questions of staff by council members?
I have none, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Did you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay. Jim, did you have any questions?
I have a question, Madam Mayor. This is, uh, this is not the public hearing, and so the public hearing has already been held. Was not protested out. Requested by property owners to have this annexation.
This is a request by property owners. I'm trying to recall if the last meeting, the March 19th, was a public hearing, and I don't think it was. It was adopted by resolution, so this has been requested by property owners. The last action we took was on March 19th to initiate proceedings at the request of the property owners. At that last meeting, the council directed staff to go ahead and prepare the engineer's report, which is one of the items that you're being asked to approve here tonight, and then also declare an intent to annex and detach from LMAD 6 and 1. There'll be a fourth action at a later date to deal with the actual adoption. And I believe, is that a public hearing?
That, that will require a public hearing on June 18th.
So June 18th would be the public hearing component of this whole process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Or anyone else?
Yeah, has anyone in the city, including administration, visited the area? That was a rhetorical question, by the way. Over the last few months, I've been visiting the area and learning about the area's income, status, and demographics, along with the narratives. I came in contact with residents over the age of 55. Some have over two decades living in the area, and they are property owners and not actual renters. Those that I've spoken with live on a fixed income. They voiced that the approximate $24 to the first year's increase of approximately $182 would cause an undue hardship in their property tax bill. And that's not what they were looking for 20 years ago when the contract was initiated on this LMAD. Or even today. It was unfortunate to hear that the proponents of this annexation, the property, the property owner who actually started this process has a mother of the age of 94, and the daughter has a mother with the age of 94. And she, the daughter lives in New York, but is waiting for the parent who deceased to sell the property and leave the area. This sentiment shows to many of those who are in the area that they're doing the last-minute attempts for property values to increase analogous to the few property owners at the golf course, who have now low assessment fees and benefit directly of a tax abatement and subsidy to the city of those who vote from friends and friends with benefits. For those of you who don't understand what I'm saying, Jean and Deborah Jones are longtime BFFs with Cox. Now back to the LMAD. All this to the benefit, after a property sale, when other owners will stay to suffer the financial burden, if this annexation pulls through.
Sorry.
Madam.
Sorry, would you read that again?
I, I just, that, that's just conjuring up stuff that's absurd.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I might, just to bring some clarity to this item, for the benefit of the public, I believe, in this case, because there was a lot of information in there that I think is unrelated to this particular item. First of all, this particular item has zero, nothing to do with the golf course. This is actually dealing with an area of public landscaping along Ridgecrest Drive in Victorville, which is along the eastern boundary. And LMAD 1 is an LMAD that these residents, the majority of the residents that are owners in that area have asked the city to detach from LMAD 1, because they are convinced enough to believe that LMAD 1 does not generate sufficient revenue to pay for landscaping to be as nice as the neighboring landscape district, which is LMAD 6. So effectively, LMAD 1 sandwiched between two nicer LMADs, and the residents in LMAD 1 are asking for nicer landscaping. So this is a process, it has to go through a 2018 process. This is literally in the middle of it, which would lead us to eventually, if this item is approved, it would initiate a ballot exercise where ballots would actually be sent to the property owners to vote in support or against. And I think finally, with respect to the numbers, I'll just identify what they are. LMAD 1 assesses property owners, each property owner in the LMAD, $28.14 a year. LMAD 6 charges $145 a year. So there is a meaningful difference there, and that meaningful difference is understood. And even with that understanding, the property owners have come to the city petitioning. They did that at the last, I'm sorry, at the March 18th meeting. And therefore, that is the process that we're in to try to get better landscaping available to the residents along Ridgecrest Drive.
Thank you. I hope that answers all these questions. At this time, I do not have any speaker cards. I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice. So I need a motion in a second.
I, I move that we approve the engineer's report, resolution number 19-014, resolution number 19-05.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia, any further comments?
Yes, I'm going to vote no on this item, because I've been visiting some of these residents, and they don't agree with the assessment of 24 moving for the first year at $182, then falling about $140 each month thereafter.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Item number two, D2, replacement of membrane bioreactors and increase to contract for industrial wastewater treatment plant. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council adopt resolution number 19-021 to amend the budget to appropriate an additional $925,000 from fund number 412 wastewater treatment facility, and approve amendment number 11 to the consultant professional services contract with Woodward and Corren to increase the not-take-seed contract amount, $925,000.
Thank you. Again, at this time, I'm asking council members if they have any questions of staff at this time on this item.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do, thank you so much. Mr. Metzler, I'm going to direct this to you, and you can pass it off however you wish. On this item, the discussion information talks about installation being a part of the $925,000 requested appropriation. Yet, back in 2018, the original monies of $2.242 million included installation. Can you explain that for me?
Uh, yes, I can, and I think the fundamental difference is that in the February 6th, 2018 staff report, which is attached, I, I believe that was speaking more specifically to the physical installation of these cassettes, or MBRs, into the wastewater treatment plant. So the best vision I can offer is perhaps the use of a crane to set these MBRs in place. So under the February 6th agenda item, that's what I understand the installation to be. We could have been more clear, and perhaps advance warning to the council that this item, tonight before you, dealing with additional costs, are more so dealing with installation of ancillary components, mechanical components, and electrical components that actually have to be installed as well to help make the MBRs work, and also to serve as interface for the generators, as well the electrical component, to interface with the generators that were also a part of that previously approved February 16th. So this item before you is an installation in addition to the installation that was talked about on February 6th.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Did you have any questions?
No.
It worries me that we have promissory notes, and we've been doing interloan fund, loaning of additional funds. And we continue to, for the last decade, to loan money and need more money. I'm not sure if, who's the involvement of projecting the cost of the finances? And are we going to have something else that's an additional, right now, what is it, 945,000? Or, okay, a million total cash, a million point two. Are we going to come see something like this of this nature? I know we've been having trouble with the IWWTP, but to what extent is that trouble going to consistently require re-appropriations of monies after we've done interloan funding, after we've done promissory notes? I mean, how much farther does it go? Is, is it very complicated to where these ancillary things have to keep coming forth? Or, or can you explain some of that processes? Because we're asking for money for the last 10 years.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I might, and city engineer Brian Gangler can help me where I either make a mistake or miss something. But there is no additional interfund borrowing forecasted as a part of this particular item, in, in large part because that was forecasted back in February 6th, when we approved the purchase of the original MBRs, and also supplemented the interfund borrowing that is in place to satisfy the capital needs. The interfund borrowing that we're talking about is between the water district and the wastewater enterprise. And as to the MBRs, this is an item, it's, it's a capital replacement item. It's a component that wears out over time, and is something that, even when we built the plant day one, we built the plant knowing that this is a replacement item, I believe. And this is where you can correct me, I believe we had originally forecasted the life of the MBRs for five years, and got more time out of them, for lack of a better description. But at this point in time, we've, we've lost efficiency in their operations, so therefore necessitating the replacement. And then finally, as to problems, and I just got to clarify, because the comment thrown out there that suggests that we're having problems with the plant is an inaccurate statement. The plant is operating well, especially when the customers that we're working with actually comply with the, the requirements to discharge their wastewater at their agreed-upon constituency levels.
The only comment I'd like to add is that the membranes that we purchased for the plant to begin operating in 2010, that was a much older technology. The new membranes that we purchased now are not only less expensive, but they're much more efficient, and there's a longer expected life for these membranes. So we, as Mr. Metzler said, we always planned on replacing these membranes. We knew that we were going to have to plan for that capital expense, and it is a rate-funded expense, because since it's a replacement, the sewer rates fund that component. And you might recall that at the beginning of this fiscal year, we increased our sewer rates, and so this capital replacement was built into that rate model. So we have a funding plan to pay for all these capital expenses.
Okay, what worries me is that staff is not allowed to freely express through their expertise the questions that council's asking. But it requires the city manager, for instance, I didn't ask about the interloan fund. I was contextualizing my question specifically for the financial issues, because we do have an additional expense checkmark at $1.2 million. So I would greatly appreciate if we use the resources of our experts that come up to the front and give the expertise, unless you, the city manager has first eye and manages that for his first sight. Then I would appreciate his response. If not, I would appreciate the committees and the people that have come up here, because they will truthfully answer very factually, just specifically what I'm asking, which is just the generic finances, nothing about the interloan and trying to sugarcoat everything, because it just makes it more intransparent. So I appreciate your response, Mr. Metzler.
Well, and if I could just say, I, I agree with everything Mr. Metzler said. I just added some additional information.
Madam Mayor, may I take a quick moment? Yes, so just to be very clear as to policy, our policy manual does state that questions are posed to our city manager, and he can pass them off to staff as he deems necessary.
And then if that's the case, why do we have them standing here? Are they looking pretty to perform? Then let them have sit down, let him call them up.
Okay, I need to move on, and I need to control you.
Then move on.
Yes. And this is warning number one.
Well, you have to have it in writing, because Mrs. Jones was still speaking out of turn.
Your time is up.
Thank you for that.
I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I'm requesting a motion in a second.
Madam Mayor, I move that we move staff's recommendation, resolution of the Board of Directors of Victorville Water District approving the second amendment to the promissory note binding between Victorville Water District Wastewater Enterprise and Victorville Water District Enterprise Fund, amending the annual budget for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen and eighteen, and approving additional appropriations of industrial wastewater treatment plant funds for membrane bioreactors and generator replacements.
Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. Any further comments?
Yes, as a point of order, I'd like to relay, when Mrs. Jones was speaking, she had extra thirty minutes, and she was allotted those rightfully. She was not interrupted by the chair, with decorum and professionalism not being displayed. However, when I had my thirty seconds, she interrupted me. I'm glad that Ms. Jones had something to say, because that reveals my thirty seconds weren't up, but I was being chastised. And that's for the record, so that we can start showing how there's a lack of equanimity here. Thank you.
And just for the record, the five minutes is pertaining to the item, not all this personal blows all over the place. So now, we move on.
Let me take the vote. I have a motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to item D three, Mojave Watershed Group Implementation Agreement. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve the agreement entitled National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Stormwater Permit Agreement Mojave River Watershed.
Thank you. Any questions from staff? Of staff, from council members?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, I have a question, and I'm directing my question to Brian Gangler, since he's here. Does this water clean act have to do with anything with La Honton, or is there any interweaving or a mixing of things that they're potentially close to one another?
Well, the La Honton Regional Quality Control Board is the, they, it's their staff that monitor this permit requirement. And so we do interface with them, and we have to meet with them on a regular basis, as well as submit annual reports. So they are involved with this permit, if that was your question.
Yeah, thank you, no further questions.
I do not have, did you have something?
No.
I do not have any speaker cards, therefore, we need a motion in a second.
Madam Mayor, approve that we, my motion is to approve the Mojave Watershed Group Implementation Agreement, and I would just like for the clerk or the manager to read the, not a part of the motion, but all the members to this agreement, it's not just Victorville. But the motion is to approve this.
Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes. Since this is being discussed publicly, who are the other signatories to the agreement?
It is City of Asperia, Town of Apple Valley, and the County of San Bernardino.
Motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D four, CDBG Contract Award, Awards of Asbestos Abatement and Demolition. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council award contract BM nineteen dash zero five four dash one to George Bryant Construction Incorporated in the amount of fifty thousand four hundred dollars to single-family structures, each at twenty-five thousand two hundred dollars, to be funded through CDBG Grants, and award contract BM nineteen dash zero five four dash three to Interior Demolition Incorporated in the amount of seventy-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars for asbestos abatement and demolition of one commercial structure.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff, by council members?
I have none, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Questions?
I have a question, a couple of questions. The staff, the staff report indicates sufficient funds are available. Who owns the property? Where does the monies come from to abate the asbestos? It's demolished, the city pays for it, does the property get leaned? What eventually happens to the property?
Good evening. Good evening, council members. Yes, the first property, first set of properties for BM nineteen zero five four dash one are owned by the city. They are substandard properties that have been vacant and occupied by vagrants. The other property, BM nineteen zero fifty-four dash three, located on Seventh Street, is owned, privately owned by a property owner by Chow, I believe. And yes, those costs will be assessed against that property as well.
Will be assessed on the property once it's completed? They have how long to pay?
The assessment actually is secured through a notice of pendency. They're assessed there until either the property owner comes forward with development, or the property changes hands, and at that point, that assessment and that lien is presented to that buyer.
Thank you. I have?
Yes. So since you disclosed that we have, I'm going to assume there's only two property owners because of the bidding, for two properties, one for fourteen and one for twenty thousand, one on Allen and one on Seventh Street. If I'm understanding correctly, how much time and what was the process to let the individuals of these properties know that if they didn't come forth with the money within a certain lot of time, they were going to have these assessments or these liens on their property? And with your experience, you probably have known property owners to come back upset, angry, probably chastising code enforcement, and then bringing something to City Council and saying that code enforcement, blah, blah, blah. So what's the defense here? Because I'm sure I'm going to hear about something of this nature.
Sure. The, all properties, when code enforcement seeks action against, for nuisance abatement, they're, they start with a typical code enforcement case, where they receive a notice of violation, we file a notice of pendency, we issue citations. When we see that the property progresses towards a deeper state of decay, and we see that as a potential candidate for demolition, we secure a litigation guarantee, an insured report primarily, so that we can ensure that all parties with interest in this property beyond the property owner are notified. They're notified with a notice to abate a public nuisance, instructing them with a very strict timeframe that they are to submit plans within thirty days for reconstruction or demolition. They have an option to appeal as well. All parties are notified. At that point, we secure an inspection warrant to perform an asbestos survey as well, in preparation for demolition. And as we're progressing through that, we're waiting for someone, a property owner, to show up and take ownership of that particular property. Our objective is to give them an opportunity to remedy that problem themselves before the city takes action to abate it.
If we're using CDBG funds because we're federally entitled to something like this, is it fair to say that we are using that federal money or public funds, and then charging the property lien on something that would beautify Seventh Street or anything like that? And why was this particular area so quickly addressed when there was three or four other areas in that same Seventh Street that were not addressed?
Yeah, there's really no particular focus area when it comes to demolitions. We're, we often, as we're doing abatements, encounter the property sells, transfers, the property owner comes forward, and so as we're progressing towards compliance, some, as we have indicated in these, in this staff report, these properties have come to a status where the owner is just not appearing, not responding, and so we're in a position where we have to take action to abate it for public safety.
No further questions, thank you.
Thank you. I do not have any speaker cards, therefore, I need a motion in a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the council take action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to item D five, Mortgage Assistance Program Background Information and Long Terms. The recommendation, any action is at the discretion of the City Council, and since Councilmember Gomez made the original motion, would you like to present the item?
Yeah, so this item came to my attention a few weeks ago, probably two, no less than two weeks ago or so. And I was approached by residents that have used the MAP loan program, which I've heard from the administrative side that it's a wonderful program. But when I started listening to the actual residents who've used this program over the last ten years, I started to see a bridge of communication that's lacking there. And so I was told from these residents that the program, although it's a wonderful program, when you don't use language that the individual can hear as non-technical, it confuses, and it doesn't really allocate what after ten years will happen. So for instance, a twenty-seven percent interest on a loan of, let's say, forty thousand dollars would be, ten years ago, different in pricing of what ten years later, twenty years would be. So the equity would be diminished less if you started in the beginning, and you paid it off quickly and immediately, or if you didn't even ask for this one at twenty-seven percent. But ten years later, or twenty years later, or at the thirty-year mark, when you're required and forced to actually pay this off, and you're limited income, you're over the age of fifty-five, you've taken up a loan that you didn't know was twenty-seven percent, and you didn't have a workshop where other people can ask these questions, I think we end up doing a disservice instead of doing a service to the general public. And when I get stories like this, that have been ten years in the trenches, and I hear it ten years later, it concerns me that perhaps our program needs to be a little bit modified, and we need to have a workshop for the general public to ask these questions in layman's terms, because personally, I've sat with staff, and they've talked so technical to me that it's gone in one ear and out the other, and it's just been very complex, and it hasn't been layman's terms. So I'm advocating here for a program that would modify with the administration to have workshops available every so often, so that when someone is signing something at twenty-seven percent, and their equity is going to be seventy thousand, and they're losing over half, they are presenting it to me as they're being duped, it's predatory lending, and I don't want to hear stuff like that. And if that's the case, we need to modify how we're addressing our consumers, and how we probably even hire a coordinator that can bridge and mitigate. We don't have an ombudsman, perhaps we need something like that. So that's why I'm bringing it forth here.
Madam Mayor, and members of the council, if I might, the specific ask of the council at the last council meeting was to bring forward information about the MAP program, which is, in fact, what we did. And certainly in this particular staff report, because it's been a program that's been in place since around nineteen ninety-seven, it's been a program that's evolved over many years. It's actually a good program that was really designed to help promote, first, home ownership, and then, secondly, be designed to help ensure that for our first-time homebuyers, that they were able to buy a home at an affordable housing cost, as defined by state law. And so certainly over the years, because there's been different funding sources supplying the funds to keep this program working, also changes in state law over the course of the same twenty-two years or so, the program has evolved, but it has achieved quite a great success in terms of the numbers it's assisted. And one of the things that I think is important to recognize with this program, we do have staff internal that helps administer these programs, but it is also highly dependent upon the mortgage industry itself. And so one thing that's critical for us in using this program and making the program aware to the public of its availability, is actually working with the lending community, which is something we do do, and we actually do lender training as to how our program works, so that we can improve the communications on both our side and the lending side as to how the program works. So with that, I think what we've got before you is responsive to what the council asks, despite what sounds like perhaps trying to go into a particular case. But with that, I think you can see there has been quite a bit of change with the program, especially as the market has changed, quite honestly. And with that, you've seen funding amounts increase over time, the availability of per-case amounts increasing over time, and with that, certainly some of the terms have changed as well. But notwithstanding all that, everything is disclosed very clearly in mortgage assistance program outlines, the outlines that we have, identify all of our guidelines as to how the program works, and then, of course, all of the recording documents that go along with that describe exactly how the program works in a more technical degree.
Thank you.
Question, Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
I didn't, we're charging twenty-seven percent? That's usury, I don't think that's allowed.
No, I don't know of a twenty-seven percent rate. That might be a calculated rate based upon an evolved requirement that with some of the funding used, there's been a requirement that instead of an interest rate, I believe, and Sophie will have to correct me where I'm wrong, there is a, what's called an equity participation component to the repayment of the loan. So as appreciation in homes occur, the obligation to repay the mortgage assistance to the city increases as well, so that the actual city or the fund being used to fund this program enjoys the same appreciation and equity.
That's correct. Just adding on to what the city manager stated, the twenty-seven percent, it's not a, it's not an interest rate, but I'll give an example to make it just a little more clear. If a borrower from the program purchased a hundred thousand dollar home, and the city provided twenty-seven thousand dollars of that hundred thousand dollars, then the city would have participated in the purchase in the amount of twenty-seven percent. Any equity that the individual would gain, so let's take a sale of two hundred thousand dollars in that same example, the city would proportionally get twenty-seven percent of the equity. So it's not an interest rate, it's an equity share provision that's called out in the loan documents, that is a HUD-approved methodology for financing, so it is not an interest rate.
And if I might, just, I think it's an important aspect of it. It's not designed that way so as to profit. It's designed that way to serve effectively as a revolving loan program, so that the funds, as they're repaid and earnings are generated, can be recycled, so that we can continue the use of the program to benefit other first-time homebuyers.
I hope that answers some questions. Anyone else? I do have some speaker cards. The first one is April Pinkston. After April will be Maggie Martin.
Good evening, City Councilor Mayor. I'm one of the people that did bring this up, because when I purchased my home in two thousand and eight, I purchased that home with the sole intention of turning it into a foster home. I did not need the city's assistance, because I'm a veteran, and I qualified for the VA Zero Down Payment Program. But I- But I was presented, from my real estate agent at the time, I was told that the city had a program if you buy vacant foreclosed properties. It was kind of an agreement between yourself and the city that if you live in that property and you beautify it and you take care of it for 10 years, that at the end of 10 years, that loan falls off. So I said, okay, why not? I did not ask for a specific amount. The city initially came back and said that they were going to, I was led to believe that they were going to grant me $46,000. And then after all the process, they discovered that I was getting a master's degree, so they decided I was going to be making all these millions of dollars, I didn't need $46,000. So they gave me $39,000. And they told me that, they led me to believe that it fell off in 10 years if I maintained the property, okay? Now, had I known that I had to repay this with the equity share, I would have repaid it when I refinanced in 2013, and I had no equity in the house. My house, I was underwater. And I'm not the only citizen that was led to believe this. There's another friend of mine by the name of Mary Gray. She was put into financial hardship, she had to refinance. At that time, she had borrowed $15,000 from the city. She had to pay, when she refinanced, she had to repay $30,000. She was shocked. Now, she didn't know that, she was shocked, and now because she had to repay the $30,000, which is almost 100% interest, that it has put her in serious financial difficulty. Now her house payment is a lot higher. I specifically asked, at the time that I was signing this agreement, why is it 10 years? Why do I have to stay in this property for 10 years? And I was told it's to keep people from coming in, buying broken-down homes, flipping the property and making a profit from the city. And so I said, okay, at that time, 10 years was nothing. I was planning on dying in that house, so I didn't care, 10 years is a, you know, nothing. And so now, because of undue circumstances and for the safety of my daughter, I want to sell the house and leave the state. And...
Your time is up?
And so now I have to repay this, and I was misled. And every creditor that I've ever had has been able to negotiate with me.
Your time is up, I'm sorry. Maggie Martin?
Good evening, Your Honor. Got some great news on Facebook about your family, very happy. And good evening, council. I'm going to tell you, I'm the first person that got Mortgage Assistance Program in the city of Victorville, 1998, 1999. At least that's what I was told at the time, or to the best of my recollection. I was listening to Ms. Gomez and thinking, what a load of crap. And I've heard some crap from her, but that really took the cake. Is it incumbent upon the city to write it each contract in a language that that person comprehends at whatever their particular level is? The answer to that is, uh, no. So when you're signing a contract, and we're all over 18, it's your responsibility to get clarity, it's your responsibility to ask questions and get answers, and it's your responsibility when you sign on the dotted line. So we cannot have buyer's remorse, it's too late once the deed is done by the signing of the signature. But this concept over here, this was some real garbage. You know, it's, I don't know if you realize it, this is what I realize. If it was up to Blanca Gomez, she would rewrite everything the city does in the policy manual and everything else to suit her few followers out there in the city of Victorville. That's ridiculous. But I'm going to tell you, I got the Mortgage Assistance Program, and it worked for me. And two or three years later, don't hold me to it specifically, but not long after, I refi'd it and I paid it off, and they reconveyed the deed back to me. My situation is, I never knew about, more particulars about Ms. Pinkston, but I heard it tonight. It's different. I think the program is slightly different. But I do want to say one thing, absolutely, undeniably, one thing where Ms. Pinkston is right. I was told, and I could probably get a copy of my contract from the city, that after 10 years, if I stayed in that house, that loan would be forgiven. So let's contemplate that on her end. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ramiro Rodriguez.
Well, nice to hear different conflicting views, calling Ms. Gomez a liar and then having the lady over here, Ms. Pinkston, say that it happened to her. So one of the things right now, I want to ask a question about the word enjoy. Enjoy, who's enjoying? Actually, it's the lending companies that are enjoying now. We're having a lot of issues now with banks that sell your loans now to other banks, but these other banks do not have brick-and-mortar offices. They're not even banks, they just lend you the money. You can't open up a checking account like a Chase or Wells Fargo. Those are the new predators now. And they're allowed. Now, my question is, Ms. Pinkston, the house went up in value, so they want 20% of the profit. Now, if the house would have gone down in value, would they absorbed the loss? Or would you still have to pay the $27,000 they initially gave you? Nine times out of 10, and I bet $100 to one, that yeah, you have to pay those $27,000. So it's a win-win situation, especially for people that need that assistance. It's not a perfect situation out there, especially in the real estate market. There's very, back in '06, you had all these, all these finances that, creative financing that they had. They financed everybody, they would make their own receipts for you. I don't doubt 10 years ago or 20 years ago, for Ms. Pinkston, they pulled a fast one over her. Now the regulations are very, very, very extreme. They check. You can go down and buy a $100,000 house with $35,000 down, and they still take you through the mail, which is fine. That way they know exactly who's buying into it, but who's going to walk away from a $35,000 down payment? But the banks still do that because people walking away from a zero down. But these loans, it's good that it was brought to your attention because it's city-backed, city-offered, city-guaranteed. Are the lights okay? Keep looking up at the lights, Ms. Garcia. Well, the city backs all these loans. And with the confidence of the citizens trusting the city, this coming back at them, it'd be nice to know if those, the enjoy, the joy of the value of a property going up, is that just going to be for, win-win for the bank? And if it goes down, is a property owner still obligated to pay that percentage? Thank you.
That was the only cards that I had on this item. Now we need a motion in a second.
I would venture out to make a motion where we have more awareness in terms of making either a staff member, a coordinator, that can bridge the gap of communication, sometimes our administration...
At this time, I only need a motion in a second.
Yeah, I'm, oh, okay. Well, I was making a motion, you don't have to second it.
We just need a motion in a second, and then later on we will have comments.
No, I wasn't making a comment, I was making a motion.
And your motion is? You make a motion for it?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, what's the motion? I mean, we just have information here reviewing, I didn't know we were asked to do anything. The question is, do we want to continue with the Mortgage Assistance Program or not? Adopted it. We don't get to set the rules, that's, we have two or three federal agencies involved, Cal Home, they set the rules. So I'm not sure, I'm objecting to anybody's motion, but what's the motion? Why is there a motion?
It was at the discretion of the City Council.
Yeah, it's just, well, it's at the discretion of the City Council, so...
Okay, I'm sorry, I was just trying to figure out...
So if we don't have to take a motion on this, we don't take a motion?
If one is necessary, but I didn't think there was a... I thought it was for information on whether or not we wanted to continue the Mortgage Assistance Program.
Well, pardon me, Madam Mayor, my...
We have two items. We have, if I may, we have two items. We have the Mortgage Assistance Program, and then we have this lady's disagreement with it. That's a separate issue. I'd like to handle it separately.
Correct, and that's, if I may, Madam Mayor, so my understanding of when this agenda item was requested, and I certainly voted for it, was, and I made sure that I clarified whether this was going to be an item to broadly inform the community, or if it was about an individual matter. And I, at that time, I recall Ms. Gomez as having stated that she wanted to understand both sides and how it affected individuals.
So again, I make a motion, and you can, the city attorney can help me with it, but the purpose was to make sure that when we illustrate the information and we give examples when someone's signing on the dotted line, that we disclose and provide the most efficacy in terms of information for the other side. And it's just to make awareness and hold us accountable. You know, we do this with other programs. We have a task force for the homeless, we have a coordinator that we're hiring. So all I'm saying is, create our due diligence for the people so 10, 20 years along the line, when none of this council's here, we're still doing due process for someone like Ms. Pinkston or other people. That's all I'm asking, bridging the gap of communication.
So if I might ask, could you be more specific as to what you're requesting?
Yeah, and so that's why I was asking the assistance of the city manager, but he's not, I don't know why he doesn't want to assist me, he helps Mr. Cox with his decisions, but if you don't want to help me with mine, then I'll try to create what I was trying to initiate.
No, I'm waiting to be recognized by the chairman, by the mayor. And mayor, if it's okay, you know, I think the issue is, and the staff report, I think, is pretty explicit, tells you about the different programs and the requirements for communications with the people that are participating. The city already has, and the programs that are in place require a certain amount of communication with those people coming into the MAP program, be it, depending on what the funding source is. In addition, I think, as the staff report fully points out, there's a second party that's very critical, and that's the mortgage lender as well. They also have basically disclosure obligations. So a lot of the things that I think Councilmember Gomez is asking for are already in place, which is communication and dialogue with the people coming into the program so that they know what the rules and the regulations are. I guess the question is, I believe that's already in place, I'm not sure, Councilmember Gomez, if you're asking for something over and above that.
Well, if this is the minimum requirement of the law, clearly it hasn't just justification, so I'm asking for modification. Do we do initial workshops every six months? Do we have that in place? Or how, does she come up and then one-on-one conversation?
To answer the question about workshops, we don't have workshops on it. We haven't had a need or a request, I should say, from the council for those workshops. Certainly if the council's desirous of that, we can. But we do have a staff that is constantly reviewing the program, especially when rule changes that our funding agencies apply to us, we certainly review the program. I believe staff still reviews the program annually, just to go through every document to make sure it's clear, make sure simple things like typos aren't existing. And so with that... Did I catch it all?
I'll add one additional item that I think addresses Ms. Gomez's concern. A workshop setting to go over the specifics of that individual person's loan would really not be practical, so it is one-on-one consultations. In addition, there's a requirement that the homebuyers actually take a homebuyer education class, that's given by Inland Fair Housing, which in this particular case, the homebuyer did. So that's an extra protection put on by a third party, Inland Fair Housing, with the goal of educating homebuyers about the home-buying process and what they're getting into in terms of borrowing for their loan. So that is already in place.
So we've had this program for about 22 years, and on the 22nd year, it looks like we still have issues. So when we have issues in social programs, we do surveys and forums, and we try to perfect or make something better for the community. And in my motion, I was trying to assess that we probably haven't done any assessments to any of the cases in the last five to 10 years. We do approve them, but the number of complaints, I would have to go through the last 10 years and ask for a public records request and contact individually the person and say, are you satisfied with your loan? And then bring five people here and say, these five people were not happy and they didn't know how to come to City Council and how to mitigate these cases, will we continue to see them again in the future? And who will attach and bring these concerns unless the council members are not having direct contact with someone like Ms. Pinkston?
So I've already seen this program for 18 years, and this is the first issue where someone didn't understand the loan terms.
But she said her friend, so that's two. She, they never probably came to you.
And your friend came to the city?
Probably not.
Yeah, she did. Great, and she... Talked when she had to pay back. She has a master's degree, I have a master's degree, so it's not like I'm stupid.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, I know where...
And I address the issue that...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we're out of order at this moment.
Madam Mayor, I think the point that staff was making is that in the 22 years, there's been over 1,000 mortgage assistance cases. I wasn't recalling any issues over my years, complaints. In fact, I've seen a lot of appreciation for the program over the years. Ms. Pinkston's is the first that I'm aware of that's been risen to a complaint level. Ms. Smith is not recalling this other particular case. So we don't certainly, we certainly believe that there isn't a trend of complaints regarding this program. If there were, that would certainly force us as staff to evaluate it, because we do listen to all complaints. In fact, we have a philosophy here now at the city, inside to the city, where we're encouraging all staff to embrace the complaint because that allows us to help improve our service to the residents.
Aye. Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
In general, the program participants communicates exclusively with their chosen mortgage lender and escrow company once a formal MAP application is made. The mortgage lender is therefore responsible for reviewing applicable loan terms and repayment requirements with program participants, which is why the lender is required to be approved by the City of Victorville, ensuring they are trained on MAP programs, specific, and have signed a lender participation agreement. Additionally, before applying for a MAP loan, potential applicants are required to participate in a homebuyer education course to further ensure participants understand their rights, the buying process, loan procedures, byproducts. So there's an escrow, there's a lender, and that's not us, and they get a pack of information, and all the buyers get that. And I'm sorry that there's a misunderstanding, but if you use the MAP program and you decide not to go to the end of it, and the value of the house increases substantially and you want to sell that after you have used taxpayers' money and not pay it back, that's not worthy of a discussion.
Well, in my closing remarks, because I know I'm going to harp and it's just going to go nowhere, just like Ms. Pinkston and like Ruth Cordoba and like many other people like Duncan Hicks and all these other people that I can name, we just feel unheard. We feel like nothing is going to happen, but I, like Ms. Pinkston, I said, I'll at least be your voice. Look, we are dealing with people who are not only low-income, very low-income, but extremely low-income. These are the voiceless people. When you have one or two people that can actually come and make a voice, and we can voice and help them, this is not only taxpayer helping, we're helping our community to be raised. And you want to call it handout or hand-up, whatever you want to call it, we are here as they come and elect us into office to at least feel that we are trying to do something, not to be dismissive and say, it's off my hands, no blood on my hands, let's pass it to Caesar, let's pass it to the next person. So all I was advocating is, if she can feel at least as she's being heard, we've done our job. If she's going to leave this office or this entity saying, you know what, I wasn't going to be heard anyways, and you get the emails, Captain Besseger, we're not going to be heard, and we're not going to be heard, and I'm tired from the residents hearing, council's not going to hear me, and I'm thinking, yes, we are going to hear you, and it's not just me. I want to advocate and say there's going to be at least two other members in this diocese that will hear you and make even of a sliver of an attempt to say, you know what, we're going to implement from now on, we're going to do a survey, or we're going to do these workshops, and I'm sorry, your SOL, probably that's what we're going to tell you. Ms. Pinkston, from now on, we will continue and now make a difference in the program so we don't have more Ms. Pinkstons coming up to the road." But you know what? That's not going to happen. She was right when she said it's going to fall on deaf ears. I already knew it, but it's at least on the record.
I'm sorry, it doesn't fall on deaf ears. And you keep saying that over and over and over, and you'll get a few people to believe you, but it's just simply not true. We listen to complaints, we listen to the community, we pay attention, and you just keep saying it, I guess to divide somebody, but it's just not true.
Madam Mayor, may I? Yes, all right. So in the spirit of understanding the program, which is what we're about to more broadly inform us, with regard to the equity share, is it the equity share in addition to the original loan that gets paid back, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And I certainly, I'm not going to, I'm actually not going to comment until we have a motion, if we have a motion, but just generally, I do think it's very important that, to the extent that it's doable and within the realms of what would be considered professional, we do need to lean in to people who might not understand things. But it sounds like, you know, in reviewing all of this, it sounds like there are protections kind of built into this system to make sure that there is an understanding. What does concern me is that we have at least several people who are of the belief that a loan falls off after 10 years. Do we have any idea how that thinking may have got started, or what might be the catalyst for that?
I do. That's because originally, when the program was first implemented for a certain time period through 2004, that was the case, that the loan dropped off in 10 years. It was forgivable. However-
I'm sorry, that was 2004?
Through the program's inception, I think it was 97 through 2004.
Okay.
The funding sources, the one funding source, which was redevelopment funding, allowed for that to be forgiven after the 10 years. In later years, additional funding came in that's outlined in the staff report, and that's where the equity share provision came in. So I can understand how the older loans had that. I think that's the source of it, but the source of information that a homebuyer gets, a real estate agent was mentioned here. A real estate agent should not be giving advice on loan terms to a potential buyer if there's a conflict there, if they're not the lender. So it depends on the source of information that you're getting that from. There could be misinformation out there, depending on who you're getting the information from. You should get it from the city staff that you're working with on, with the program.
So to be clear, if someone participated in this program in 2003, in 2013, their loan would fall off? It would be forgiven?
I'm sorry.
So if someone, if someone purchased under the MAP program in 2003, if they, in 2013, the debt would clear?
That is correct, and that would have been reflected in their loan documents and in their loan terms, yes.
So at that time, do you, do you draw up new loan docs? Or is there a, do you do-
It's a forgiveness.
Okay.
And the council, the time period where those have dropped off has pretty much elapsed, but the previous, those who have been on the council longer may have remembered on the consent calendar seeing requests to forgive the loan pursuant to those old rules.
Sophie, isn't it-
You'll fill within that 10-
In the 10, yes.
Within that 10-year period, so there were no exceptions anywhere along the line?
No.
Sophie, is it appropriate also to point out that all of these requirements, either the 10-year, the equity participation, those are all set by state statutes. They're not governed by the city. We're just implementing programs, either through the redevelopment law, which had the 10-year limitation, or through Cal Home or other funding sources. It's all set up by the state funding source as to what the terms are and when these loans, if they can be forgiven, when they could be forgiven.
That's correct, because there were so many different funding sources available in later years, like the Cal Home program, which is a state program, the NSP program, which is federal, the home program, which is federal. Program would have specific guidelines for what, whether or not something can be forgiven, for example. We could do that on RDA, and if we had RDA funding, then we would forgive them. In later years, we didn't have as much RDA funding, and so we had to go under that particular funding sources guidelines.
Yeah, but the city does not set those guidelines. They're set by state programs and state statutes.
Right, because none of it is city money. They were all funded through different grants to the city, or in the case of the redevelopment agency, which is not the same as the city.
And one more question, if I may. So if, if a loan were forgiven at this point, what would the ramifications be to the city?
A loan that did not have forgiveness provisions written into their loan documents?
Correct. What would-
It's probably more of a legal question. There's no provision in the contract to allow for forgiveness if it's not in there, so.
Correct. Previously, a lot of the loans that had the 10-year forgiveness provision were redevelopment loans, so they were funded with tax increment. And again, the theory of tax increment was you use the tax increment to basically help development, home, home buying, and that kind of thing. So that law never required any kind of repayment. It just had a provision that if the homeowner was there for 10 years, then the program had essentially, the goal of the program had been met. So at that point, you could forgive the loan per state law, and there was no ramification.
One additional point about these loans in all cases is none of them, from the time the borrower received the loan and bought their home, up till the 30-year point, if they were still in the home, they are deferred payments. So they're not paying on that loan for that entire 30 years. There's no payment, monthly payments.
So in order to voice Mrs. Pinkston's particular issue, that she has been burdened with all these, I'm going to call it weeks since I found out, but it could have been months or years on her behalf. She was, even though she said she heard several occasions and understood that the loan would be dropped after the 10-year, she said, "What I'm looking for is for negotiation settlement. I'm not even looking for it to be dropped, even though that's the intent that I heard. All I want to do with the city without having to go to city council is negotiate my terms. That's all I want." And I said, "Well, I don't know what we can do for you, but if you can't with administration and you have to bring it to city council, city council like Mrs. Jones can ask the appropriate questions, and then we could determine what can we do." And she's asked very keen questions, "What are the ramifications if we were to forgive this?" And we took that authority. But she was asking for negotiation, so I don't know from here, you know, I don't want to be, I don't want to say she wouldn't love to have it forgiven. I'm not going to say that, because that would be wonderful, but I am going to voice what she voiced to me, which was a negotiation.
Right, so Madam Mayor, at this point, I'm a bit concerned that we've strayed off the intent of the agenda item, which was to broadly inform about the MAP program. And now, I mean, now it seems like that we're, we're working on an individual case, which specifically was not the intent of this. And so we get into transparency issues with the public. The council wants to bring it back and do something like that, then we can look at that. But, but in terms of doing something specific like that for an individual case right now, it wouldn't be in keeping with the Brown Act.
I think to be able to contextualize what happens with the MAP program, you have to be able to bring real-life, realistic stories like case law. We actually look at presidents and what is, what it is that is happening in the community, and that's what we go through. And whether we like it or not, we legislate here from the bench. We create laws and ordinances. So we have that power, within the power of, like Mr. Cox has always said, "Can you count to three?" And that's the power that we have. And I'm not trying to create an issue, I'm trying to bring one voice of how many voices are there? If I were to take the time to actually look at all these cases, one by one by one, but without the assistance of my colleagues, it's too much when we have so many topics in the area. So that's why bringing it here, we put our heads together and see what we could do. But I'm not just trying to make a point that it's her that we need to. It's people like her that are very gutsy to come in here, to be chastised and probably ridiculed in putting her information out that I said, "We need to do this so council can see how it's affecting our very low, moderately low-income individuals." And my intent is not to just do with her, it's what is the MAP program doing for our residents who are not coming up here, or don't know that Mrs. Jones exists, or Mrs. Garcia exists, or Mr. Cox, or myself, or Ms. Rivera's.
I think one of the important things to point out when we had the 10-year forgiven, that was restricted to 3% of the purchase price also, tremendously different. So a $50,000 home maximum that was available was $4,500, and it was all the documents. And anytime they got rid of that, the whole thing was due, if they, less than 10 years. It was only after forgiven, no change in ownership after a 10-year period. I don't think there was any questions on any of those. And, you know, if someone goes through an escrow, my God, what, there's 74 pages and all kinds of things in there, and not everybody reads that, but that's the job of the lender, the real estate agent, they have really responsibilities. In this particular case, we may have an issue that we might want to authorize the staff to once again look to see if there's any movement on the city's part. But the program that we have, I don't think we can rewrite it. That program is we are a participant, and we become a partner with the agencies that have put up the money, that make it possible for very low and low-income people to buy a house, or we junk the program so that it isn't possible to any of the low-income people in the community. I think that would be a wrong move, but I don't think we can rewrite the program. I don't know of any other programs that are available, but if staff has information, I think they should provide it. I haven't read all the documents, I have been involved in some of these. And anytime that an individual uses the MAP program, and then for reasons that, for whatever, and there can be a few or dozens, and they decided to sell the property, whatever, they cannot benefit, they cannot gain the equity from the investment that this lender made. They have to pay that back, and that seems fair. I mean, I like it, but it seems fair. But I'm willing to, council would like to discuss it, have a study session, whatever it is, but that to me, whether we want the MAP program, is separate. What Mrs. Kingston is asking, can I negotiate? I have no idea if we can legally negotiate. I don't know. That's a legal question.
So at this time, what we need to do then is either end discussion, there's really no motion here, or what is your suggestion, or what are you asking for?
Mr. Cox did suggest a study session. I think that would be appropriate within the next three months to settle something of that nature, a study session, because if we get more of these cases, at least we're going to be informed. I mean, we don't get to sit in staff time during the staff reporting, so this is potentially something that we're learning for the first time, many of us.
So a study session to go over in greater detail the terms and purposes of the MAP program?
That was the suggestion that Mr. Cox did, and I'm going to go with that.
I don't, I don't mind having one. We're going to have a lot of, we're going to have a lot of sessions regarding the budget. This, the docu, very thick, three different documents, as I recall. They can be distributed to the council for the council to read, and then the staff can spend five or 10 minutes briefing the council prior to going into one of the particular budget sessions in regard to what it does, the intent, where the money comes from. It's a revolving account that gets paid back and made available again, so very low-income, low-income people can buy a home, and the money's made available under strict conditions. So I, if we need some information so that council can get more up to speed on this, I see nothing wrong. It might be helpful.
So was that a motion, then, Councilmember Gomez?
I'll make that as a motion.
I think actually, Councilmember, Councilmember Gomez, did you make that motion?
Well, yeah.
Was it your intent, so then Councilmember Cox perhaps can second?
I believe Councilmember Cox's motion was different than what Councilmember Gomez was suggesting. What I'm understanding from Councilmember Cox's motion is more speaking to providing the written information to the council in advance of the budget hearing, so that when we go through the collective budget presentation, there is a line item or line items dealing with MAP, we could answer any questions at that time. I understood that. If I'm incorrect, please correct me, but that sounds different than what Councilmember Gomez's motion was.
That's what I understood.
So the study session, Mrs. Jones had stated, and I said that goes along with what Cox was saying, with the procedures and the processes and the understanding of the intricacies of this level. And so if that's a study session that you're going to produce, then that's what I'm seeking.
We receive it in writing.
Right. I mean, does anybody want to interpret for me right now? Because I'm just saying it's what Mrs. Jones and Mr. Cox are saying. If I'm saying something else, then, you know, someone can interpret sign language or in Spanish. If you want, I'll say it in Spanish, if that'll make it better, but you've already said it, and so has Mr. Cox. So it's no different than what I have stated. I'm saying yes.
But for purposes of clarity, so we are, we are requesting a study session specifically for this item. Is that the understanding?
For the MAP program.
For the MAP program?
Yes.
Not a se-
Not a separate session?
Not a separate night set aside, but a part of the budget process.
Okay, and is that fine with you, Councilmember Gomez?
That is fine.
Then we're good to go.
Okay, let's put an end to this.
And that motion was made by Councilmember Cox, or?
Yes, Councilmember Cox.
And Councilmember Gomez, you seconded it?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I was an aye. The motion carries unanimously?
Okay, I can move on to D6. Discussion and possible action regarding a governance team relations workshop. Recommendation, any action is at the discretion of the city council again. Councilmember Jones made the original motion, so would you like to present the item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would. Thank you very much. First of all, thank you to my colleagues for allowing this matter to be placed on the agenda. I'll try to be brief. "When I took my oath of office, I believed, and I still do, that the Victorville City Council has enormous potential. I spoke about how we could accomplish much if we share a unity of purpose, that commitment to transcend individual differences, to focus on the greater good." Well, what is the greater good? Well, without doubt, it's to carry out our role and responsibilities according to best practices in governance. First-rate teamwork is essential to every quality organization, and this includes the city of Victorville. While it is right and good to care about people and want the best for them, we must pledge ourselves to building and maintaining a dynamic partnership that produces positive results. We are obligated to be well-informed contributors to the team, to interact professionally, and to get the job done for our community who understandably expects nothing less than competence, integrity in office, and commitment. Toward that end, and with your two newest council members now having served for four months, I believe this is a fitting time for us to take part in a facilitated governance team relations workshop, that is, intra-council relations as well as council to city manager relations. In my view, this would have to be conducted by an expert in local governance who has practiced in facilitation. The workshop necessarily would be held during the open session of a duly noticed meeting of the city council. However, discussions dealing with the personnel side of this may likely meet the exception criteria for closed session. If we are inclined to move forward with this, and I believe we are, I would ask that each member of our team commit to being teachable and respectful, ultimately with the goal of applying lessons learned to our daily work as a public servant. So Madam Mayor, I'll hand it back over to you, but when you're ready, I'm happy to make the motion related to this item.
Based on the information that I have here, are there any questions of staff at this time? Any questions?
Yes. So every time there's a new election, there's automatically a retreat for all council members. This is overdue since 2016, and if you guys remember Doug Robertson, the former manager, he'd stated that he would wait for that retreat- wait for that retreat because it was his opinion that nobody on the City Council would get along to be able to create a mission statement and goals and values for the city, for the council, to be able to acquiesce to our constituency. We know that a council member motioned a few weeks ago with the majority of the council, with one member abstaining, to be able to fund the city-related trip to the City Council Conference. And how does this relate to it? Because the motion that was made, there was an item before us. And this item was to discuss the possible action regarding a governance.
Ms. Gomez, excuse me. I was asking, I'm an item that if council members have any questions of staff at this time.
Okay, for the city manager, we haven't had a retreat. Is there a reason why we haven't had the opportunity to have a retreat?
I haven't been asked by the City Council for a retreat. The closest thing that we've come to that is when council members are elected, we have supported sending council members to the League of California Cities event, where it's an event focused on an introduction to new council members, the roles and responsibilities of council members, among a number of other subjects. And that's the closest we've got to that over the years.
So you were unaware of a retreat that happens every election year for all the new council members, right? Because I know you were just appointed not too long ago.
I'm not aware of a regular recurring retreat, and I've been with the city for over 20 years.
Yes.
Okay, because Doug Robertson had mentioned to me on various occasions that that's typically what happens, but he was saying that he didn't feel that any of the council members would be able to listen and do any of this nature, so is postponing it. And so now that Ms. Jones is bringing it, I'm not understanding why the city council, the city manager, would not be attuned to it, and since you say you've been here for 20 years. And I was just trying to give you some leeway since you've been here a manager for about a year or so.
What are you insinuating?
I'm not insinuating anything.
I'm going to call Mr. Robertson, and I'm going to ask.
Please do. If you want, you could make him three minutes here so he can attest to that, too. You're more than welcome.
Madam Mayor, I've been on the council since 2012. We have no retreats that I know of. I haven't attended one unless the council had one without me.
With the city, how many years, and you've never heard of such a thing?
Oh, yeah. Back in the 90s and 80s, the council had retreats, and the daily press and almost everybody in the world complained because the council were having retreats, and the public wasn't there, or it was difficult for the public to get there, and the council stopped it. So did most cities. Can't go off to a retreat and discuss what's best for the city and leave the public out of it.
That was not what I insinuated. I don't know if that's what you meant to say.
Right. Retreats, or council having a retreat, is where they retreat, they go away someplace, and they lock the doors, and they negotiate what's best for the city. But I don't know of any, I don't know what the other cities are doing, but since I've been on the council, and I was back in 2008, '09, and '10, '09, '10, and '11, there were no retreats.
I'm just discussing my conversation with Doug Robertson, the former manager.
He may have been just trying to.
I don't know about that before.
I would like to say that I support Councilwoman Jones on this workshop. I think it's in-service training is needed in the governance of the City Council. And I applaud her for putting forth this agenda, and I certainly would like to second her motion.
Thank you.
I haven't made the motion yet, but thank you for your kind words, Mayor Protam.
I do have some speaker cards. Let me move on. Ramiro Rodriguez. And after Ramiro, I think, no, he's the only one.
I just have a few doubts about what this governance team relations workshop is all about, whether it's just to separate one single element that's not going with the city. We've had several conversations up here in which the city's saying, well, this person doesn't actually represent what the city wants. And one of the representatives says, no, I represent what the voters want. So is this one, a group that's going to get together and become stronger so that way they can separate that element from being a nuisance to the board and help to the city? And who is this professional person you're going to elect or contract? Is that person going to be elected by us? Or the council, Governance Council, is the one that's going to suggest what person is going to be overseeing that governance team? It's just, we've seen so much contradiction among the council for so long. And this just smells a little fishy, to tell you the truth. Just going to group a little four or three people together a little bit stronger and eliminate the people that actually represent us. Because, to tell you the truth, I see you guys representing us, and you guys work for us.
Well, thank you, sir, because I do represent the people.
Exactly.
That's why I got elected. That's why I.
I'm sorry. Point of order. He has three minutes.
I'm not offending. I'm just saying that the voters elected the people for their needs, not elected the people to do things for us that we don't ask for, like the golf course. Thank you very much.
Okay. I'm prepared to make a motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I moved that the council direct our city manager to seek out for our approval an organization that would be proficient at facilitating a governance team relations workshop, and if possible, to present us with prospective dates of said workshop.
I second it. Second, yes, good, thanks.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones and a second by Mayor Protam Ramirez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm going to be able to provide a comment here. These are one of those, remember when I tell you it all shifts all of a sudden? I'm sorry for the city clerk, but I know there's a comment area before we do the vote.
Oh, my apologies. You're right.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So here is where I provide the comments. So a council member motioned a few weeks ago with the majority of the council and one member abstaining to fund the city-related trip to the city-county Arrowhead Conference. This particular item that we see before us, it's called Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Governance Team Relation Workshop, which was motioned and approved by the same council members. And if you go to the website for the city-county conference, you will see, black and white says, "It's a forum for all elected officials and appointed leaders from local governments across San Bernardino County to discuss issues across city limits, to share ideas about the best practices for addressing those issues, and to come together to find ways to cooperate and work together for the benefit of the region." Again, let me repeat this last sentence for the council that voted not to pay for a city-related cooperation and benefits workshop for this region. And it states, "to come together, to find ways, to cooperate, and work together for the benefit of the region." This agendized item shows not only the disregard for the people who are paying attention, but mocks the city of Victorville's five council seats before you. This council voted for me not to attend a professional conference for cooperation and agendizes this item for what? Why did Jesus rebuke the scribes and the Pharisees so harshly in Matthew 23:13 through 36? They didn't practice what they preached, but instead they made it burdensome and onerous. This is the root of a prideful heart.
Madam Mayor, are we going to be back in the comment period? Thank you. So to be very clear, Councilmember Gomez voted in favor of placing this item on the agenda. She may have seconded it. I don't recall. But I was very clear when I teed up this item that it's not about regional partnerships. This governance workshop is to work on intra-council relations and council-to-city manager relations. That is a unique situation that requires a facilitator adept in dealing with the issues that often plague city councils. Thank you.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Protam Ramirez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D seven, Discussion Regarding Setting Limits and Councilmember Requests for Possible Agenda Items. And this again is at the discretion of the City Council. And being that I was the one that requested the item to be agendized, I will present it. I believe that we need to set a time limit or a limit on items to be agendized, depending on the council, whichever way they feel. It gets a little lengthy, and the other thing also is, if an item has not passed, it has been denied, can it be brought back? And if so, how many times? So actually, there are like two items in one. Are there any questions of council members?
Well, I just, I guess my concern with this is if there's legal ramifications to setting limitations here. I was particularly interested in the second part of the item that's related to continually bringing back requests for agenda items that had already been denied to be placed on the agenda. And I don't know if we even have the legal grounds to do that, so I'm just looking for counsel on that.
And if there is a time limit, it should be a two-minute time limit.
The question of time is very important because you cannot limit speech. It's against the Constitution. The question therefore would be, how much time are we referring to? Are you talking about the original three minutes, or is it five minutes? I would like to know.
I said two minutes.
Two minutes. I think that three would be a better compromise, between two and five. Three minutes would be sufficient. Therefore, the agenda items would not be rushed, we could understand, and there would be an explanation. So other than that I don't agree with two minutes, I think that the question of limited time is acceptable in regards to the number of items that a person could list. So I see nothing wrong with that. However, on the other, I do not know, when you say that if an item has been voted on and failed, that it, are you saying that it can come back and be repeated again?
Not the item, the request for an agenda item. So if someone makes a request to place something, place something on the agenda, and it dies or fails, can that council member continue to bring that item, to take another bite at the apple and bring it back again? So on these issues, I really, Madam Mayor, if we could hear from the attorney on this, because there might be some legal implications here. On the second one, when we're talking about continuously bringing back items to be requested for the agenda, the underlying issue that I have with that is that it undermines the will of the majority. If the majority made a decision, and that's how we rule, right? It's the will of the majority that sets policies, sets direction, and makes decisions. So if there's a continual bringing back of requests for agenda items, it really is disrespectful to the council that has spoken, unless I can see a situation where there's been a significant change in circumstances that might warrant something like that.
Thank you.
Mayor Garcia, if I might respond to the question. There is a provision in the policy manual that says, "Requests by council members to add the same agenda item to every subsequent agenda are not permitted unless approved by a majority vote." That's kind of consistent with Rosenberg's rules, the theory being that once an item has been considered by the council, there's this concept of finality, it shouldn't come back again. And the only way you can typically do that is if you agree to suspend the rules. That requires a four-fifths vote of the council to do that. And again, the purpose of that is to have some finality, so that once you take an item and you discuss it and you just deal with it, it shouldn't continue to keep coming back again. The exception to the rule is if a four-fifths vote decides they want to bring something back, they could do that by suspending the rules.
Are there any other questions?
I do have questions. The time, I didn't understand the time. I thought we had time limits for everything.
Not for agendizing items.
Well, let's say tonight, when it comes my turn, I want to agendize three items. Is that three minutes per item? Three minutes for all the items? What's the time?
Each council member has a time limit.
There is no time limit with respect to council members putting items on the agenda.
At this time.
At this time, correct.
But we may have.
I will make a suggestion, if I, this may fall on deaf ears. This council has been trying to get along. We've agreed to have a governance team relationship, a relations workshop. Could we delay this until we have to have the workshop to see if there are agreements that this council can come to? Because I'll bet you, I can find a dozen loopholes. We can't have a rule for everything in the world. And unless somebody is looking for the loophole, we don't need all of these rules. And if we have the governance workshop and it becomes clear that one or more simply wants to extend the meetings and find loopholes, then we can adopt the rules for how long you get to say hello, I guess. But it seems to me, if we truly, truly want to get along, we ought to start getting along. And I, if the council needs it, fine. It doesn't make any difference to me. But I would like to see, looking for loopholes and adopting every meeting, have something new to adopt because somebody found a loophole, is a pretty clear indication that there's no intent to work with the council, whoever does it. Applies to everyone.
And so I would suggest, and venture out, if the four of you do agree, because it's clear what's happening today, that city staff go through 1962 to present and find every single agenda item that has been brought, so that none of us, with no exception of any five of us, repeats that same agenda item. Because I'm going to guarantee that every agenda item that we want to put up, someone since 1962 till present has already made that motion, whether it passed or didn't fail. And so that would be very important because we're looking back to the city. It's not from now on until the future, and then we change it. This is playing by the rules. And I know none of you thought about this, so it's really interesting. So when we do go and talk about time limits, which is three minutes or whatever minutes, and let's not repeat what we said in 1958 or 1963, I'm going to hold each one of you also accountable, because like Mr. Cox said, this might fall on deaf ears. And I'm going to quote Mr. Cox, "This is to no one in particular," you know? So we're going to play fair by the rules. No one's going to be trying to play anything, and we're going to have this workshop, and if it doesn't work, well, by God, the staff has a lot of work to do, because throughout the years, there's been so many of these repetitions, things coming time after time after time. And it is useless to be creating policy after policy to strive to stymie only one or only two persons. And I don't think it's fair for the predecessors or for ancestors, for people coming forth, for people coming in. It's just not fair that we take so much time on something so miniscule instead of dealing with the problems that we have in our societies about these 72 square miles, 130,000 people.
Madam Mayor, so actually, I can see how someone would presuppose that no one had considered the issue of bringing back agenda items or dealing with a certain matter again. That is not correct. I've actually had this discussion months ago with one of the, what I consider might be a little inadequacy in Rosenberg's Rules of Order, which although it sets out, as does Robert's Rules, a certain finality in our decision-making, it doesn't allow for significant changes in events that might warrant the council looking at the matter again.
Mayor Garcia, if I might, just for the record, in the past, you actually had a municipal code provision that basically allowed for the bringing back of anything that was discussed, essentially, anytime you wanted to. So that was a municipal code provision that was changed by ordinance.
But we do have an ordinance at this time.
We still have an ordinance, but we have a policy manual now that governs how we do things.
So I'm still requesting for a two-minute time limit.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said, Madam Mayor.
Two-minute time limit per member, council member.
I haven't requested that. I haven't requested that.
I am.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood you. Sorry.
No, I have. Yes, I make a motion that we limit to have a two-minute time limit per council member. They can agendize. They can agendize as many items as they can within those two minutes, but it should be a two-minute time limit for council member.
I second it.
Motion made by council member.
I do have some cards. Can I take the card, one card? Ramiro Rodriguez.
I keep coming up here because I want to know. I want to know exactly what's going on, how this process works, how everybody works together. As to responding to Ms. Councilmember Jones is that the majority decides, yeah, the majority does decide, but the Constitution also gives the minority rights also. So everybody is pretty much in balance with oneself and the judges decide whether those laws or rules are legal or correct. But as to bringing back agenda items, not allowing them, that's kind of like hindering democracy. What's next? You're not going to allow anybody to run again because they lost? And the persistence, insistence, sometimes maybe you need to inform and educate the crowd, the public, the voters, that that matter, that thing really matters, it's important. Maybe what wasn't popular a year ago, it's popular now. So it's very important, persistence. Persistence and persistence is what got you guys elected. If you guys would have given up, oh, I lost the first time. No, but a lot of you guys stuck with it. Same thing with the agenda items that you council members are presenting. They're presenting it for yourselves or for us? So if we go up to you and say, you know what, we think this is important, you have to decide whether you are the ones to decide what's important, what isn't important. Because a lot of you people are very disconnected from everyday people. A lot of you people own your houses already, are kind of well-off, are very educated. A lot of people work two jobs. A lot of people have trouble making ends meet. A lot of people have trouble buying milk for the week or for the day. So there's five of you and 130,000 of us. So you actually know exactly what everybody's going through. I'm listening to what's going on with the map and this. And I've bought houses and I've gotten loans and certain loans that are offered to me that aren't offered, that are not offered to some people, but not to me. And we know why. But as to limiting, the persistence, maybe Ms. Jones or Ms. Brita or Ms. Garcia, Mr. Cox or Ms. Gomez have an idea and you think it's important. But because you brought it up and the other people weren't really interested in it, but we are.
You have 30 seconds.
I think that this is actually hindering democracy more than anything else. And I think it's important you really think about this and also limiting all the agendas in just simply two minutes. I don't think you should limit yourself to what time you have to get going back home. So thank you very much.
Maggie Martin.
The motion made by Mayor Garcia, seconded by Mayor Potem Ramirez. Any further comments?
Yes.
Yes.
Would you repeat the motion?
Ladies first. Okay, Ms. Jones.
Thank you. So, thank you.
It was for the two minutes.
So my question is, is the intent of the motion that it's two minutes per request or two minutes for all of the requests per council member per meeting?
Two minutes per council member.
Per council member, okay.
And they can agendize as many items as they wish within those two minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, of two minutes, if the individual brings up an item that has been turned down by the council and indicates that there's a special reason, is it still the council's intent that the council then can vote by four-fifths vote to bring the item back?
You would have the option essentially.
The option's in the rules at the current time.
There would have to be a motion to suspend the rules.
Correct.
Yes.
On two counts, timing and the maker of the motion.
That is correct.
Secondly, on the finality, my understanding is that's good for a period of time and we haven't defined it, but I think a year is sufficient.
Correct.
I mean, it isn't forever. Somebody brings it up, it's turned down. Looks like, you know, things can change after six months or a year if they want to try it again. But just meeting after meeting after meeting is what I'd like to see prohibited unless there's good reasons that we vote. So I'd like to have that clarified. How long?
We do not.
Are we talking about agenda item requests or failed items that have actually been argued?
It's failed and so it's final, but when can they bring it up? Just the same item, there is no difference in the conditions, they want to bring it up again.
Well, my understanding is they can bring it back, but it has to be approved.
The council has to agree to suspend.
Okay.
There is no time limit in the policy manual at this point in time. And again, the rules that govern this are dictated by originally Roberts' Rules of Order. These are parliamentary procedure rules, not rules that we basically are following. Roberts' Rules and then Rosenberg's is a modification of Roberts'. Our policy manual follows essentially the Rosenberg's Rules of Parliamentary Procedure.
I understand. Thank you.
So the motion is that two minutes per council member and as many items? Because we had two other conversations take place of four fifths suspending or something like that. So what is the motion?
Two minutes per council. As many items as you can ask in two minutes.
So people, so this is what I'm anticipating when some council member says, these are all the ones I need to have approved, everybody's going to be like, no. So none of them are going to go through. So if it took two minutes to contextualize something and it was three items, one was good and the other two were bad according to the majority, that's how you're going to anticipate hearing them then, right? You're anticipating listening but not listening because the first thing is going to be no, so all of them will be no automatically. Because in two minutes, someone might not stop to say, does anybody agree with me?
That's not what I mean.
Okay, so what do you mean?
Let me explain to you. You can bring up an item, a request, and if we approve it, okay, it gets agendized. You can have another one if you like. We may deny it.
So when the person is speaking, their time is going to be turned off or their time is going to be continued to allow?
Two minutes per council member.
So then that doesn't give you the time to approve or disapprove?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so.
You don't have to be so lengthy, just make your motion and stop talking and we get it done.
So everyone is going to have the anticipation to do that?
No, but I understand what Councilmember Gomez is saying, if I may. So are you saying that, so you have, let's say you have a paragraph you want to read or say to contextualize an agenda item request. That's the only part of it that counts toward the timing? Is that what you're asking?
No, I was just, two minutes, I'm going to say, does anyone, I want to make motion this, I'm going to make motion that, I'm going to make, and I'm going to use two minutes, literally, to put the motions in. So now you are going to have to decipher which ones you want to approve and which ones you don't want. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do. But I don't think that's the intent.
That's an anticipation.
I think it's like you do one at a time.
Right, because I'm not going to take 30 seconds to see how much you guys vote.
Let's put a stop to it right now because my only request was to limit each council member to two minutes. It's up to you whether you want to read a whole book and just to agendize one item.
Yeah, but I don't think you're understanding what's going to happen. I mean, you could approve it. I mean, it's not a big deal.
That's fine.
But it is an item.
My motion.
Yeah, it is an item for discussion.
Second. City Clerk.
I do have a motion by Mayor Garcia, seconded by Mayor Potem Ramirez, for the two-minute time limit. Any further comments?
Well, yeah, these are my comments because I was trying to comment and I was being shut down. So what is going to essentially happen is if there's a two-minute allotment and I don't allow every 30 seconds for someone to intervene because I don't want them to use my seconds when I'm contextualizing, the trouble's going to be, all these items that I put, whether it's three or four of them, will get denied in one swap and one member might have said, you know what, I'm in part with the third one, but not with the second one. So whoever wants to suspend will have to say, well, I suspend, we're going to do, you see what I'm saying? So I'm just anticipating that and that's what's probably going to end up happening certain times when there's more than two motions trying to be on the floor.
And I do have a comment, and if I may, I am concerned, I don't think two minutes is sufficient. I mean, I can take two deep breaths and spend two minutes, so I would, I might be interested in this if it were a longer period of time. I just think two minutes goes by in a heartbeat.
Well, I, three minutes, no more than three minutes.
Are you altering your motion?
Yes.
Is that going to be a modification to the motion?
Modification to my motion.
A substitute. Do you want to just?
I believe it's actually a substitute would be.
A substitute is the quicker route.
Right. So it's a substitute motion now is that the motion is for three minutes and is it a second to that substitute motion?
So the motion was made by Mayor Garcia, seconded by Mayor Potem Ramirez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Takes care of the other motion, there's no need to vote on it.
Correct.
Now we move on to Item D8, Discussion Regarding Public Safety and Traffic Enforcement. Recommendation and action is at the discretion of the City Council. Mayor Potem Ramirez made the original motion, so would you like to present the item?
Yes, I would like to talk about it because today, as I came to a caution light and I stopped on the squally, the person next to me speeded up and went through a red. This is what I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about public safety on the streets and also about traffic safety. So I met with the city manager and Captain Bissinger and Lieutenant Wickham. And the question was, do we, how do we have enforcement of traffic? Is it because we need more persons to be hired? And the conclusion came, which I thought was very interesting, was that what we need to look at, and this was brought up by both Mr. Wickham and Bissinger, was that we need to look at technology. Rather than adding more people, if we have better tools, we could probably slow the traffic down and save lives. And I think that as a city council person and as all the rest of our members, money is tight, so therefore we have to put priorities. And I agree with the three experts that I spoke to that in our budgeting, we should look at the tools of technology to be able to help our sheriff department to be more effective and to save lives. So I am very happy that I was able to meet with the three and I learned an awful lot. And I would like to put a motion that in our budget, that is becoming, well, that'll come in May, that we consider technology if it was requested by our department, our sheriff department, so that we can help save lives. And I thank the council for allowing me to speak on this and I thank you very much.
I think you just answered my questions that I might have had for staff.
I did have one card. Just a minute, let me back it up here. Does anyone have any questions?
Well, should there be an dissent from the council members agreeing to this? Are there, I don't want it to fall in the well and be forgotten. I agree with it, but I don't know how to get this.
Well, I'm saying that we should keep a broad mind and an open mind that when we go into budgeting in May, that we should look at the requests of the sheriff department and Mr. Bissinger and Mr. Wickham because I do see that the effectiveness would be far better by using the tools of technology. So in the budget, we need to be able to consider the fact that that probably for now is far more important than increasing the staff.
I concur.
Well, I know in the past that we've done, we've done this via a formal motion so that it doesn't get thrown, tossed to the wayside unintentionally. So if you'd like to make a motion, I'm sure that it's going to be seconded, that we direct staff to.
I make a motion that in the, in May, that regarding the budget, that we look at the purchase of technology for the department, the sheriff department, for effectiveness in law enforcement and traffic enforcement.
Second.
Motion made by Mayor Potem Ramirez, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
We didn't even give the opportunity. There was only two people out of the three that gave their comments. I'm sorry, but I'm still trying to speak and you're already getting a motion. She could motion whenever she wants, but you have to give the opportunity to the rest of the council if there's any questions.
Excuse me, I'm not there yet.
Then there's a motion and then there's a comment. You are, when she's asking, excuse you. You don't know the rules. When she has asked for something, I need to comment, he would like to probably comment, and you might need to want to comment. So you are not doing your due diligence as a chair.
Look, you don't.
I am such a what? Finish your sentence.
I'm only adjourn the meeting.
I don't wish to adjourn the meeting.
You can't adjourn the meeting just because you want to. Mrs. Jones says she would like to continue.
Well, you don't shut up, you don't need to.
Are you shutting up? All I'm saying is, she automatically jumped. I'm not saying it was her intent.
The meeting's adjourned at this point. And we do have to go back in the closed session, however.
If the meeting's adjourned, how do you go back?
That's part of the five o'clock meeting.
Excuse me, we are going to reconvene this meeting. We have not had public comments, so we do need to have an opportunity for public comment. So I would suggest, Mayor Garcia, that this be a recess as opposed to an adjournment. We have not had any public comment.
Yeah, we will.
A lot of people just left. That is not fair. We have just cut the constitutional rights of people to come and speak. You should have said that before she adjourned or as she adjourned. Don't wait for Mr. Cox to come and say, what can we do? He could have even said it.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes, you did. You could have stopped her. We know that she's committing violations for the constitutional rights of the people.
Mayor Garcia, it'd be appropriate to call a recess right now for a few minutes, for five minutes.
We will be starting up, recess is over. Please take your seats. My apology, I should have known better than to adjourn the meeting when we still had public comments.
Mayor Garcia, if I might suggest too, it may be appropriate if you also do the other E items, but that's up to the council. The most important thing is to obviously consider public comment.
And that would be my preference to finish the meeting.
I'll go ahead and finish up the item. Were we done with eight?
No, we were. Council comments were on D8.
And we skipped the questions and that was my argument.
Be appropriate at this time to ask if there are any other further council member comments on D8.
Any other comments?
I have none, thank you.
I'm not going to skip my questions, so I'll take it on right now. So are you asking for a blank check for the police department? Have the residents and stakeholders been assessed as to their input? Is there money? Why aren't we asking the community how the community would like to spend their money rather than asking our contract of county sheriffs how they like us to spend the taxpayer dollars? Why haven't we seen the budget that is available and what funds these are coming from? These are important analytical, data-driven questions that we are not assessing right now. These are important analytical data-driven questions that we are not assessing right now. It has come to my attention that several community and stakeholders have sent emails to Captain Rick Bessinger and Deputy Sheriff Mendoza to no avail. There have been no return emails or courtesy calls returned. I would be remiss not to publicly voice these concerns for these stakeholders. What was asked of the deputy sheriff and the captain were the following. Reporting on crime activity in the city. Any observations in regard to data analysis to vouch for a stronger police force that backs Victorville and the installation of traffic officers for curbing ill behaviors? Will the police captain be addressing these requests of these constituents directly? Or will they be forwarded to someone to contract so that they can contact for these unanswered emails and phone calls? What can the city manager do to address these requests? And how much of the general fund does the fire safety get allotted? Are there other accounts that fire safety withdraw money, would withdraw money from? And if so, what are those other accounts? What can the city add to contract to allow for more community policing, less aggression for non-criminals and training schedules for our contracted police?
Mayor Garcia, if I might, I would recommend actually that somebody make a motion to continue this item to the next meeting because again, the public's not here to hear your deliberations and discussions on this item. And I would want to make sure that nobody from the public that might have had some concerns about this had an opportunity to speak on it. So I would take any cards you have right now, but I would recommend also continuing this matter for reconsideration at the next meeting.
Go ahead and take the card that I have.
Yes, certainly you can take the card. That'd be courteous.
Maggie Martin.
Oh my God, Blanca, you are so new in more ways than one.
Address your comments to the entire council.
She is so new in more way than one. I'm gonna, I'm gonna address this in public comments further, but I'm gonna tell you something. I had a call for service yesterday about one o'clock in the afternoon here in the city of Victorville, obviously. Want to know when I finally got a call from a deputy? 10:00 PM. Know how many times I had to call them and tell them Grandma goes to bed at nine or 10:00? So it better be before 10:00. In other words, I'm not taking phone calls at 11:00, midnight, one, two, three o'clock. And I'm not going to go into it because it's really not relevant, but this is not the first time. It's been one of many times when I had my home on Newland Court. And just this one time, one or two times with this, having to chase after them. You want to know why? It is nothing but priority calls in Victorville. And I'll get into that more. It doesn't have anything to do with that captain, anything to do with those deputies. It's the type of people we've got living in our own backyard. Therein lies your crime problem of the last 10 years. I'll get back to it in public comments. Thanks.
Okay, that was the last card that I had on this item here.
Again, I'd recommend somebody make a motion to continue this item to the next meeting, given that the public, I wouldn't want you to have deliberations without the public's input.
Is this regarding the red lights, the fifty?
Eight, mhm.
Item D eight.
I'm gonna go ahead and make that motion that we continue the item for the next council meeting.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, now we we move on to public comments. And I do have some cards. Starting with Chef Basil. After him will be Maggie Martin.
Good evening, council. Tonight, I'm going to be passing off some invitations, but on May 18th, my wife and I are doing the gala for all the veterans here in the High Desert. And the purpose of this, we do it every year in different communities, is to thank those who have given service, who have helped veterans in one way or another. This year, we added a community section to it. But at first, I want to make sure that tonight, we have some great veterans in here that are going to be honored. We have Paul, we have Army, we have Harrymans Army, we have Navy. We have, and then we have Air Force right here. And so, but tonight, I'm here that I wanted to also honor and give praise to Navy medic, Mr. Jim Cox. And I don't know if a lot of people didn't know he was, was in the military. I didn't know. So when I find out, when I found out, my wife said, we have to do that immediately. So that's the first one. Then the other one, we're going to, I'm doing this in category order as how people affected me when I first lived here. We also have one for Sophie. When we were here the first time, Sophie just embraced us and gave us an explanation of how Victorville is. And so she was so kind to me and she didn't know, she didn't know who I was from Hillabees. But I told all the other veterans that her explanation to me about Victorville really was something that I wish everyone would do. And so communication, community, humanitarian is going to be Sophie. Then the next one is going to be, the veterans here call her Miss Smiley, Heidi. We're going to salute and honor Heidi as well. She always has that smile and veterans like, that's what we like to see. And there's times that other veterans have told me, hey, do you know this lady with the big smile, Heidi? So she's going to be one of our honorees as well. And then we're going to have the person that was so kind to me. And she really prayed for me when I was going to go win. And I really needed that because I was competing with other people. And our mayor does a lot here. And sometimes it burns me up to see, you know, people just say things. And being a PTSD, and I think you have PTSD too, I think. You told me, I think we talked about it. And so sometimes I'm not all there sometimes. Like the day I came and I took off my shirt and shows you, thank God my wife would be here. Boy, did I catch when I get home. But we have some really good people here that say thank you.
You have 30 seconds?
Thank you. So Mayor, you're going to be one of our lifetime honorees as well. And I want to show everybody that's coming around the state that's coming here, all the good people here. First, Heidi, all the good people here who not just was kind to me, but a lot of times they say, thank you for your service. Just saying thank you is good enough for me. And I'm honored to have met Sophie and all of you here. And we're going to show the entire state when they come here. I expect about a thousand people.
Your time is up.
Okay. And I have tickets for everybody in City Hall who wants to come. So could I give, who would I give these to to make sure? Thank you. Oh, oh, oh. Stuart Weaver, Stuart Weaver, the guy that cleans here all the time? One day he was here and he gave us water. He's been here 31 years. He's our extra, extra community winner of the year.
Maggie Martin. And then after Maggie, Deanne Hudgen.
Good evening, your honor, council. I'm going to be very brief because I got a lot to cover in a short time to do it. That day that you had me removed, your honor, I understood that, but I also understood it was because a crybaby over here was whining, so about partisanship and all that stuff. But the Brown Act does say that you can only remove a person from a public meeting for gross disruption. You know, like what she did when she brought all the people in, the Mexican flag and all that. That's gross disruption. Fakety and them, that's gross deception. Okay, Joe Fakety, wish he was here tonight, but he's not. He'll probably hear about it from, you know, blabbermouth over there. Joe Fakety has no appeal of judge's decision and was dismissed with prejudice. Restraint order can't be brought up before the court again. I, I gotta tell you, I've said it before, I, I think he's a sweet guy. I mean, I, he's sweet and kind to me, but seriously, there's, you know, I'm not sure the elevator goes all the way to the top or he has too much free time on his hands, one or the other. So, and then we're going to get over here to Rita Ramirez. Asking to agendize public safety, you know, at this meeting as if it's a fresh or novel concept, when I and others have been asking for more deputies for years, long before Ramirez came to Victorville last summer. Yet she claims she loves Victorville and loves the people when she hasn't even been here long enough to know either. Now, on the public safety issue, I'm going to tell you, not been impressed since the four years I've been coming here with one deputy and a, drawing a blank, the dog, police dog. And one, let me tell you, I'm, I'm angry. This is my project is law enforcement and getting more deputies on the streets. And I've talked to many of them this week and committed to them. And they're like, yes, Maggie, thank you, Maggie. Dispatchers, yes, Maggie, thank you, Maggie. Because you, dispatcher told me yesterday, you speak for us because they can't be here and the, and the cops can't be here and speak up because they're employees. So one deputy is not going to cut it. It's not going to cut it. I know what this town used to be like. You get a deputy in 15, 20 minutes. You're lucky if you'll see a deputy in four to 12 or more hours because as, as the nights or the days go on, your call starts dropping because priorities are coming, priorities are coming. You can't even get ahold of them.
30 seconds?
911 calls at 8:30 on a Tuesday night last week, 8:30. For those of you who don't have as much contact with law enforcement as I do, now, don't think you're going to impress me and we have money to spend it over here and over here and for this project, this project, this project. You better start realigning those priorities unless you need a cop sometime and you wait six hours, eight hours to get service. That probably wouldn't rest well. So one or two ain't going to impress me. I'm going to need about five minimum to get this party started. Thank you. Somebody left their cell phone up here.
Deanne.
Good evening. I was almost ready to leave. I thought we were, our meeting was over. I'm responding to Councilmember Gomez's call to action. I think she said 30% of this, the population in Victorville was, was the senior citizens. Well, that's me and that's my husband and many of our friends. And when we're talking about the golf course, we absolutely do not support the city not supporting the golf course. In other words, we want the city to support the golf course. Many of us lived through the time the golf course was allowed to die. Different time, different days, you know, different era. We see a whole picture, not trying to separate the haves from the have-nots. The people that live at the golf course are not haves anymore. In the past, maybe they were the, the higher echelon of Victorville. They're not anymore. They're just regular people like the rest of us are. I would guess that the assessed value in the Green Tree area is probably less than the assessed value in Eagle Ranch. And if the golf course were to close, not only would the assessed value of what our council member Gomez thinks is the higher echelon and the wealthy people in Victorville, yes, it would affect their properties. It would also affect mine and it would affect anyone else's, no matter where you live. And in doing that, the assessed valuation in Victorville, the entire city, not just people were trying to target and point at as people were trying to make examples of, would decline. In doing that, so would the tax revenue that comes into the city of Victorville decline. So if we want to hire new deputies, if we need to hire, I support the technology, by the way. I think that sounds like a great idea. If we want to bring in technology for our, for our safety and for our police, where's the money going to come from? I don't know that any of us have money trees. I don't think the city of Victorville does anyway. So if we lose that assessment citywide, we're not losing people. Our population's not reducing. We don't have a city sales tax. We're going to be in a bigger world of hurt than we are right now. So we need the golf course. That's one of the things that when people drive into Victorville, driving down the freeway, driving into Victorville, they see it. How many of our businesses? How many of our businesses are going to even consider Victorville if we've got acres and acres and acres of dead grass? Anyway, I'm responding to the call to action as a 30% of that socioeconomic group in Victorville. I'm not afraid of you. I will be happy to come speak with you at any time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ramiro Rodriguez.
I'm not really opposed about the golf course. Golf course can exist. Thing is, I don't want to pay for it, that's all. I just propose something like technology, like charging automatically through whoever lives there, $10 a week. $10 a week will alleviate $55,000 a month from us. So those $55,000 can hire 15.7 officers what they make in a month. So we can get 15.7 officers just by the city, not us, I'm sorry, not the city, us not paying for the golf course. I think $10 a week is not so much of a burden to have association dues for the people to decide to live by the golf course. Most of them are just rental properties too. If we're looking for funds, there's really a lot of solutions. So on that part, like I said, the golf course, it could use a little bit more attention. For the money we're spending, it needs a lot more attention. It's, it's, it's the pride of Victorville. Basically, the people drive to the city for the restaurants. That's the beauty of it. But there's a lot of, lot of, lot of, a lot of things to do here in Victorville. And I just want, one of the persons that spoke up here says that they weren't being responsive because certain people that now live up here in Victorville, maybe that person would like to be more clear about what kind of people are the ones that moved up here to the city. That didn't sound really polite. The city is growing. City is changing. It's changed drastically. Future shock set in real quick in seven years. And we're just, all we want is simply to be recognized and the voters to be listened to. We don't come up here just to vent. I noticed that. I notice when we're speaking, they're looking, some of you are looking the other way, looking up, looking to the side, no matter what we say. But you know what? I'd like to say thank you for the people that do listen to us. And Blanca, we promise, all the 55% of the Hispanics that live up here, we're going to wake up, vamos a despertar ese gigante. We're going to wake up that sleeping giant. And we're going to make those people go out there and vote. We're going to make them not just vote for the last name, but vote for the person. Because that's what's got us in trouble to begin with. We think just because of the last name, oh, looks really pretty, all these Hispanic last names. No. Let's get the person. And they don't have to have an Hispanic last name to be with us. So that's very important. That's one of the, we've been here for two years, I've been over two years trying to get your attention. You haven't given, you haven't given it to us. You said, no, you know what? Tough, we don't want to do that. So 2020 is coming up and we thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak. Thank you once again.
Darrell Madley. Darrell? John? I guess he left. Okay. Those were all the cards that I had. Now we move on to item E two. Announcements by our, by our city manager.
Yes, madam mayor, members of the council, a few items coming up. Community activities and then we have some development activity to share as well. There on Wednesday, April 17th, Friends of the Victorville Library, we have our book sale. It's a fill a bag for five bucks. All the proceeds will go to the Friends of the Victorville Library. It's a nonprofit organization. Spring Festival, we talked about before. Just a reminder again that that's coming up. That's the festival and egg hunt at Hook Community Park, which is on Joshua Street between the hours of 10:00 and 3:00, 10:00 AM and 3:00 PM. And then also an exciting opportunity recognizing Arbor Day. There's an Arbor Day tree planting. It's put on by Alta Vista Innovation High School, a diploma program that operates out of Apple Valley and Hisparia. They're actually working with city staff to identify a location. A location has been identified where we can actually do planting of trees that have been granted to that program. And that'll be done at Yvadell Park along the Riverwalk Project. Desert Havens. Desert Havens Motel Project, motel, sorry. Desert Havens, that's the former Queens Motel. That's actually in Planchak. Back and forth, we're in the revision stage, but that's moving forward. That's the project that transitions Queens Motel into a homeless solution geared towards the chronically homeless. Rubbermaid expansion is in the temporary CFO stage. Safe route to school is substantially complete. And we've also reached substantial completion with the water main replacement project at the Mountain View Acres. That's all I have.
Mayor Garcia, if I might, I think Ms. Pinkston had a card on this and it got misplaced. So it'd be appropriate if she's got public comments. Apparently somehow it got misplaced to, or to have an, give her an opportunity to have her public comment.
I, I don't have a.
Apparently she said she submitted one and it somehow got misplaced, but we should have. Apparently, she said she submitted one and it somehow got misplaced, but we should have asked for any additional public comments, so.
Go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to address the fact that you all know that I have had an ongoing problem with Blanca Gomez. Okay? The problem has been going on for a long time. But yet, and Blanca knows that full well. And several months ago, I tried to get up here and say that I pray for each and every one of you because you have been given an awfully big responsibility. And that includes Blanca. Well, I ran into Blanca in the mall and she was gracious enough, when I addressed her, to come allow me to speak to her instead of just telling me to go away and pound sand. She was very gracious. Now, she understands that I still have problems with many issues that she has. Okay? Or many things that she does. She understands that. But she was willing to take the time and listen to me. Now, because of that, I've been told by a certain city resident that I've made enemies of all of you. And that I have... I don't wanna use the profanity that she used. And I don't understand that at all because I pray for all of you and I don't think you think that. Okay? But I pray for all of you because I need you all on my side when I have a problem. So, I am gonna go out of my way to not make enemies of you. And so, I just wanted to make that clear because I appreciate Blanca because she was willing to talk to me even though we have butted heads on numerous occasions. And the fact that I was told that I've made enemies of all of you now. And I hope that that is not the case. And... But when I addressed the issue previously about the MAP program, I was told, you know, if you didn't understand, you should've asked, you should've asked, you should've asked. Well, I asked and asked and asked. And at the time, I asked the city council, two city council members, and they, in fact, told me that the loan fell off in ten years. Okay? And now, I've asked another question about what happens in thirty years when this loan ends? If I can't sell my home, I can't get a straight answer. But I didn't wanna bring that up, but I just wanna make sure that you understand that each and every one of you, I do pray for you because someday, you're gonna stand before God and you're going to answer for the way that you have run this city. And I don't view any of you as my enemies and I hope you understand that.
Thank you and I don't know why everybody's always speaking for me. I don't even know you. Why would I be against you?
Because we have an overabundance of people who want to cause a problem. They want to divide the people. They want to divide the Hispanics and the blacks and the whites against Hispanics. And there's people who like the city that are... They're vet on dividing and causing problems with the community. Don't listen to them. If you have any questions on the council, pick up the phone and call. Don't listen to those people. We have too many of them.
Yeah, we're here to serve and not to be against anyone. Thank you. Okay. Now, we move on to E-three. This is the item where we have councilmembers discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda.
Madam...
Sorry, Madam Mayor, do we have another individual with a card that didn't get turned in?
Oh. Paul, I think you know who you are. Go ahead.
Okay, good evening. I was, yeah, I was holding, I was listening to the comments today as far as the MAP program and I think that there's really a lack of understanding. As a lender, I work in the mortgage business. Okay, one thing I do take offense to is the premise that things are being done corruptly. You know, that things, always this conspiracy theory of, you know, of the council is withholding information. You know, it's just not true. First of all, the MAP program is not controlled by the city of Victorville. You participate in it. It's a program that's governed by HUD, FHA, other entities. You cannot change the MAP program. You can do two things, like Councilmember Cox said. You can choose to continue participation or you can choose to get out. That's about it. Now, as far as clients that are in them, that participate with the MAP program, they are well-educated on how that program works. There's full disclosure. Now, I, you know, first of all, we as consumers, we need to start learning how to ask the right questions to the right people. Somebody that has not participated in the MAP program probably doesn't understand what the MAP program even is. They need to educate themselves on the MAP program. A real estate agent is not expert on how the MAP program works. It's a lender. When she signed, when the client signs docs, they sign two sets. It's full disclosure. She does not sign, the client does not sign docs with the city of Victorville and then with escrow. Everything is signed at escrow. Now, the other thing that...
No, you weren't there.
No, I was not there, but I...
You're not speaking to my...
I'm not trying to speak to anybody's situation. I'm just saying, okay? But now, the other thing is that if the city of Victorville, our councilmembers, our councilmember is going to, you know, search for the right answers, then stop going on fishing expeditions. And I'm speaking about this particular councilmember, Blanca Gomez, because you went and you called lenders, loan officers, that happened to know me...
You have thirty seconds?
And they called me. Now, trying to get people to turn against a certain, trying to get, trying to fish for certain answers to make something look wrong, it makes you look wrong. What I told, what I told those lenders, those loan officers, they need to stay away from you because you're trouble. And you're gonna get them pulled into something that they don't wanna get pulled into. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much for that information. We appreciate it. Okay, now, we have a discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda.
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. Thank you. I have a request for two separate agenda items. The first is to develop and adopt a vision, mission, and goals for our city. So, I'm interested in having an item placed on the agenda with a preliminary discussion and action regarding whether the council would wish to partner with the city manager to develop for adoption a vision, mission, and goal centered on driving long-term success in Victorville. There are many advantages to setting a clear direction, including making financial decisions that align with established priorities, building confidence among our community members, attracting and retaining business, and providing us with a valuable tool for conducting an objective evaluation of our city manager. So, with that said, I move that the council place on a future agenda an item for preliminary discussion and possible action regarding the development and adoption of a vision, mission, and goals for the city.
Is there a second? There'd be no second. The motion dies?
Well, hold on. I wanted to make a comment, but I don't know if we had to have first the motion for the purpose of discussion. I'm gonna second that.
Okay.
So, this is not the first time that we've heard of that and I appreciate the fact that you're actually bringing it because in writing and multiple emails, I've even drafted the mission, the values, and pulled from all the departments in the city of Victorville and asked our city manager, when would we work on something like this? Because this is very important. We have an umbrella for the entire city to know when we ask any of the four-hundred-and-thirty-five or so employees, what is the mission? They could just spit it out that quick. But we don't have anything like that. And I've tried that and if it comes from your mouth and we can make it happen, you know, I'm gonna second it in order not only to be a discussion, but to actually be fact. Because that's what I've been looking for, for the last few years. So, I appreciate you coming up with that.
My pleasure. I do have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. All those in favor?
I have a comment.
You have a comment?
I thought we had that.
Nope.
Staff, we don't have that in our general plan. We don't have goals and missions for the city? Hundred percent, we need to. I thought we did. Okay.
Any more comments? Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have just one additional request. I'm interested in an agenda item in which we direct the city attorney in coordination with the city manager to review and make recommendations for revisions to our current policy manual as might be necessary. So, with that, I move that the council place on the next agenda an item in which we take action to direct the city attorney in coordination with the city manager to review and make recommendations for revisions to our current policy manual.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further questions?
Yes. So, I think this is gonna be the fourth revision? And is that like in less than six months? Was it March? We focus so much on the policy with rules and regulations that it makes me wonder, what are we really trying to accomplish? I mean, the rules don't work. Remember, we as individuals, councilmembers, can use three minutes up there. I mean, you force the hand of the people to literally do things because you're right, there are loopholes. You've seen people go up from the dais to use three minutes just to extend or maybe to elaborate on things. So, I don't know what the purpose is, but if, instead of just doing one after one after one and it perceives that the people say you're attacking one person, why don't we just say that every two months, we're automatically having a review? That way, we at least fool the audience as to it's not because of one councilmember because she said something or he said something. If we do it every two months, you're looking, picking up, and putting stuff left and right and it just covers it. So, we don't have to keep adding. So, we don't look like one's an enemy of the other. It's just common sense. Every two months, we're gonna have it. Everybody's gonna agree, at least three people will, and then we don't have to keep bringing it up.
Sure, and I appreciate what you're saying. I know that it's probably been, I think, less than two years since the policy manual was originally instituted and it's not uncommon for new policy manuals to, you know, get brush-ups quite often because it's new. And as you, you know, work with it, you find that things could be polished up. And so, that's really my intent here. Just as an example, there's, and this has nothing to do with any councilmember in particular. I'm just a bit of a nut when it comes to policy and procedure and I like things to be neat and tidy because I think when we have something that's explicit, it helps us to govern better. So, you know, I had in mind one of the items that deals with the flow of an agenda item. I think that can be tightened up a little bit. That's what I had in mind.
I appreciate your comment. The only thing that I could see is a policy. There's hierarchies in our law and the ultimate law of the land is not the city council. So, we had a municipal code and the municipal code was altered by a public hearing when we had people that actually came and said what they wanted to alter. I think the council has taken it upon itself to create a policy and make it a performance as if it's the law of the land, which isn't because if those policies are broken, none of us are gonna get arrested despite the chair asking captain to arrest one of the councilmembers. So, I think it really does a disservice. But when we keep it as a municipal code, as an actual public hearing, it might hold some weight because now we're holding not only ourselves accountable, but we're actually holding our constituencies to say, how would you like this public hearing through a municipal code change and how can we change it? But we've taken it out of the hands of the people and we've called it a policy, a policy that has no teeth. We cannot be arrested for violating a policy. Who are we gonna go to? We're just public chastisement. Oh, my gosh, she did wrong. I mean, I don't know if that's the purpose of it, but if we did a municipal code, it would hold more teeth for the actual audience to hold us accountable to these policies that just don't go anywhere.
Okay, let's, I think we're getting it too far because I think this is, these are arguments that we might make when something...
Well, that's what we're trying to step.
I have a motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all I have.
Yes, I do. I have been thinking, and I don't know if this is possible or not, but we do have a right to speak and people can stand there to the microphone and give out information that's dead wrong. Or maybe know they're wrong and just flat lie about it. I have no idea. But on the other hand, the people that's watching this, when we don't respond, have no idea if that person's telling the truth or not. You know, you close a golf course, how many officers could you hire? How about closing a park that cost us over eight-hundred thousand a year? I'm smart enough to know that that's what makes up the community and I can't choose and pick the things that I don't like or choose the things that my enemies like to try to punish them by closing the park or... That's just ridiculous. So, we have, let's close the police department. We had an idea to get eight policemen and the county fire union went against it. We don't have the eight policemen we could've had. But we have to listen to the voters? Well, the majority of the voters, almost sixty-four percent, voted for that. Wanna listen to the voters? We went to the vote for, to change the ordinance to allow, change the, from a contract city and the voters said, absolutely not. We like it the way it is. But in our wisdom, some of us, not me, aren't paying any attention and we wanna go to districts anyway. So, we're not, you know, we can't pick and choose when we're gonna listen to the voters and when we can't. The last one was, look at the city's webpage. It's wrong in regard to the census, on and on and on. We don't do the census and we have a webpage and it is correct. Public who heard that have no idea what's right and wrong. But it seems like to me, we have an obligation, when those things occurred, to put it on the next agenda, information only, that sets the record straight. That's, and that's a, that's a motion.
Second.
But now, my comment is, are you gonna be cherry-picking what is information or information not because in your motion, it didn't say so? Are we gonna talk about that?
If it's on the next agenda, we'll talk about it.
The motion was made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Do you repeat the motion?
Ms. Jones has...
Yeah, so, my experience has been on, because there is, there is an obligation for the city to make sure that the information that's being put out there is accurate. And my experience in the past has always been, it's been the CEO that's taken a moment to correct the information. How that would work at the city level would be interesting because, I mean, I can hear all kinds of things in a council meeting, whether by a councilmember or a public member, that's simply not accurate and it's just, it's just the repeating of something that they've heard. And my concern is, although I think it's, the idea has a lot of merit, I'm concerned how much time we might be spending doing that. I'm just wondering if we can kinda...
I'm willing to accept any suggestion as long as we inform the public.
I would love to give it a little bit more thought because I think, I think the idea has merit. I'm just wondering how to affect it in the most reasonable way with and without offending our members that have the right to speak their mind. But in terms of some, you know, issues that are completely factually incorrect, it is concerning because it does give people that are viewing online or other members in our audience the wrong impression of our city.
I'm willing to... I'm willing to amend the motion, whatever is necessary. What I, I get, after every council meeting, I get stopped, I get asked, I get phone calls, did this and so really happen, is that really true? And I have to explain, not only is true, the individual saying it knew better. Well, then you need to respond, we, we need to hear what the truth was. Can't you turn to the staff and ask them to, for the record, to explain it? Well, sometimes the staff is busy on other things, and they're not, they can't bring up their tablet, but, but the public needs to know the truth. We talk about informing the public, and have transparency. And yes, it's a period of time when people come up and voice their opinion, and we ought to listen to their opinion, but more and more people are saying things that's patently untrue, factually untrue, and I think they know it. I think they enjoy trying to tear the community apart. We have an obligation, as the elected officials that represent this community, to put the facts out in some way. Here's the allegation, here's the truth.
I'm, I'm wondering, would it be possible if we, if we bring forward an agenda item where we brainstorm how we can handle this?
I think, I think what is, what is very interesting is these terms of reasonability, correction of word usage, vocabulary functionality, accuracy is very subjective, you know? Some of us were born in the baby boomer areas, in the baby boomer era, others are millennials, we all just have a different perception of what that fact, of that narrative is. And so our schools do an excellent teaching methodology, which is research and primary sourcing, which what we do is you build credit upon credit where credit is due, by these PhD individuals. So if we wanna look at stuff like that, and you wanna correct what we perceive to be misstated, or misinformation, or fake news, are we going to start employing, or probably partnering with universities to be able to bring the backing of what's being stated, so that we do produce the best information? Not just from staff, but the actual data that backs it up from the experts? Do you understand, so that way we don't look like there's an implicit bias, and it's not just internalized, we're getting sources from actual accredited individuals? Is that the length of what we're looking at?
I have absolute trust and faith in the staff.
So the staff would be sorting, citing sources, I'm assuming? Because their word alone, we can find some other narrative and contradict it, I mean, like, for anything, right? I'm not saying I distrust the administration, I'm just saying, where there's always the opposite to what one argument is.
People are entitled to their opinion, they're not entitled to their facts.
Absolutely. And facts are also subjective of how you bring them and sugarcoat them. But you know, any intellectual being would understand that you can call something red, and just, it's red because I see it red, and that's my perception, and get three other people to understand that it's red, and it's really pink-blueish, or whatever. But I'm not arguing with you, I just wanted to understand where you were coming from, and what your motion is.
Okay, then we continue.
We are continuing, there's a discussion going on.
We have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
So did you repeat the motion again? Would you?
Can I repeat it?
Please.
To put an item on the agenda to consider having the staff to react to individuals who give out misinformation, and correct the record for the public, so the public will always get the truth.
And then that would include the council, right?
Certainly includes the council.
Because you just said the staff over there, and I'm sure that we get-
No, the staff will do the research and put it out. No, I don't want an individual councilman to put out their version of the truth.
That, you misheard what I said. I was just, when you had said, for the audience to get the facts, I wanted to make sure. I'm sorry, I'm having a discussion, whenever anyone else discusses, you don't input anything. As the chair, you should be modeling. I'm responding to another council colleague, and you're interrupting. I appreciate your clarification for that motion.
Councilmember Cox, motion, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
So, I motion to have documentation and notice to be provided to the city council, when the city manager will approve anything over twenty thousand dollars, when approving authority that is within the city municipal code. So far, we don't get very many notices of what's happening. Today, I saw the very first for thirty thousand, and I thought, city council should be able to see stuff like this. We're not seeing it.
Is there a second? There be no second, the motion dies?
The next thing is, the city council gets complaints and potential lawsuits from the general public when faced with dilapidation of city property, failing infrastructure, contracts from transportation, and other contracted public services. We, as a city council, in 2016 had a potential complaint for our residents and stakeholders that should've been agendized. This is no longer the case. The city administration now covers up and does not provide that excellent service to our taxpayers, so I'm motioning to request such documents to be revealed in our agendas. The potential lawsuits that I'm talking about, I have found are at fault with many of our city employees, and it doesn't protect the right for them to get that due process, or for our residents to get that due process. For instance, and I'll give you an example, because we want facts from the city, and so hopefully we get these facts. For instance, a city employee Victorville, a city employee from Victorville, not too long ago failed to yield, taking the pedestrian with him in a vehicle. In another example, an elderly woman on the, was walking on public sidewalk, and she fell because of an unmaintained sidewalk, falling which caused her a concussion, where the city again used that lack of bringing such information to counsel, it was used to protect itself. And this is why I'm asking for these civil lawsuits to be brought back. They were taken just, Kennedy was still here, when it was motion and seconded by them to say no more, and that really troubles me. Of course, you're gonna hear a no, but I'm putting it on the record, right?
Is there a second? There be no second, the motion dies?
The third one is that the city adopt an app, it's called the GoQuest, which is for requests, so that residents and stakeholders can place their complaints. If you're not familiar, the city of Apple Valley and other municipalities have this application on their phone, where they see something, maybe graffiti, a pothole, anything in the city, and they can just use the GoQuest, click, write a complaint, it goes strictly to the department that it needs to go, and anybody can check on its status. We don't have that in the city, and I think that would be beneficial to you, the resident. And that's my motion.
Is there a second? There be no second, the motion dies?
And then, the third one is, on many occasions, people who are sitting out here say, you know what, Blanca, we don't see that timer, and we see some people get a little bit extra more than the other, and we just wanna be aware of the timer. Is there any possible way that you can show the time when it starts and when it ends, so that we're also abreast as to how the timing works? And I said, I'll try to add it to the agenda, and that's my motion, to try to add a timer so that everybody can see it, not just one or two particular individuals, but the entire.
Motion made by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comment?
Yes, not necessarily for the, all of the reasons that Councilmember stated, but I, I do think it, and, and I don't even know if you can get access to it through some, something online. I, I do think it's helpful if someone has a visual, so the speaker knows that when, you know, how they're doing in terms of time, and it's, it's easier to see when they're down to a minute, or down to thirty seconds. So for that reason, I'm, I'm interested in the agenda item.
A motion made by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And then, the last motion that I like to add is, a lot of the cities are very high-tech, and they're using these buttons where you can click whether you agree or disagree on a motion, and it displays it right up here for everyone to know how Ms. Gomez, or Mr. Cox, or Ms. Garcia, or Ms. Ramirez, or Mrs. Jones voted. These go very quickly, we don't sometimes know who voted for what, and I understand that, being on that side, it's very diff- sometimes we're mumbling, we're interrupting each other, there's all these noises in our head happening, because we're thinking about the meal for tomorrow, et cetera. So, we need to have something to accommodate the public, to be able to visually see, when we press yea or nay, how we voted. I think that's a service to the public, whatever the reasoning is, the public has asked on multiple occasions, and I'm just voicing that concern, so that's what I would like to motion. And we already have that system, I was told, it's just, we haven't voted to say yes, that we're gonna use it, we're gonna get training, I mean, it's not difficult to put a yes or no button, but it's already here, it just requires two more people to say, hey, why not? That's all it requires, no money, no extra expenses, nothing like that.
Is there a second? There be no second, the motion dies?
That was all.
Now we move on to A4. This is reports from council members, three-minute time limit. I'll have Gomez go first.
So, on April fifteen, during an egg hunt in Alaranto Stadium, we got the opportunity, five different organizations, to serve the children, low income, from all the high desert. We had over eight thousand eggs, and it was a wonderful event, where we had Catholic charities, conveniently me, high desert equality, we had the fam spot, and another organization, and they came together to produce a free program. And so to be able to watch the constituency take advantage of things that sometimes they can't offer within their family realms was, was a blessing in disguise for the people that did attend, I was one of those attendees. Also, I need to apologize on behalf of the city for the mayor's conduct. There was really no need to adjourn violating our constitutional rights, and your constitutional rights, by adjourning in just the heat of the moment. And there's a lot of people who left because the chair did adjourn. It was very unfortunate that our community had to face the lack of decorum and professionalism that we aspire and we talk about in our policies. That's read every single, I'm sorry. Warning number one, you are disrupting, and the mayor has not called your attention. The second thing is, you know, that professionalism, she reads this every single meeting, and it's so important that what we read, we begin to digest and actually exercise with our community. I also need to address the time spent on item D7. When we have monies like six point six million dollars, it's just a joke how much time we spend on items like D7, how we're gonna cut your time, lower your, you know, stuff like that. We have, we need translation services, congestion decreases, parks for the mentally ill that are challenged, housing, affordable housing, beautification of our city, so many needs, but to spend time on items like these seven, I think we do a disservice. Quiero decirle que la palabra no se las lleva al aire cuando cuentan, cuando dicen algo cuentan, cuentan conmigo porque yo soy su voz. Quiero pedirles mil veces perdón por las personas que se fueron pensando que la junta había acabado este concejal desafortunadamente con el alcalde, se emocionó demasiado y se fueron y no tuvieron la oportunidad, y mil disculpas les pido con la ciudad, que ojalá esto ya no vuelva a pasar y sea otro día nuevo y podamos aprender de nuestros errores. Lastly, Prop 13 and the assessment of values of property. Bob Dutton is the assessor, and the county recorder, Ensign Mason, Ensign Mason is the office where he has tax collection. And those people who, who live and have property, you're protected through Prop 13. There's no more than a two percent that can be added to your property tax value, despite the market value. You're protected, the market value hits those people who are purchasing their home right now, today, as the inflation goes up. So for those of you who live in the golf course, I don't know what the deal is about your property values going down, blah, 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 this and that. Believe me, I went to the assessors and the tax collector, if you purchased your home forty, fifty years ago, you're at that same rate you purchased your home, it could be three million dollars now, you bought it at ten thousand dollars, you're still paying your assessed tax fee on that ten thousand dollars. And you get to save that money, because when you pass it on, Prop 58, you save with your colleagues and your children, and they don't pay that same fee.
Yes, I do. Why do you think that's unique to the golf course, and not the whole city? Another attempt to just divide and cause hate and discontent. You're very good at it.
Yeah, I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor, very, very, very quickly. So, all right, so first and foremost, I'd like to apologize for my outburst at the beginning of this meeting. There are just times when the envelope of patient endurance and patient forbearance gets pushed a little too far. Brewing up storylines might be good for some, those with itchy ears and wagging tongues, but not for those who are reasonable. Last, you know, those kind of stories have no basis in fact. I attended the SBCTA meeting, I served in Councilmember Cox's stead, I attended the VVTA meeting yesterday, I believe it was, attended the Old Town Street Fair, Route Meeting. Thank you to Ms. Neri for the invitation. I attended the BIA Baldi View High Desert Luncheon, the Victorville Cleanup Day, and I'm so proud of our fire department that showed up and enforced to prove just how much they care about our community. And today, I attended the SBCTA groundbreaking of the Highway 395 widening project. I'm looking forward to the egg hunt this Saturday. Thank you.
Mayor Garcia, we still have to go into closed session. Through item B. There is no reportable action with respect to item B on the closed session agenda, and the closed session meeting was adjourned.